Okay, everyone. It is 6:00 PM. We're going to open tonight's council meeting. Like I said, 6:00 PM, and we're going to start with Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Member Klein. If you'd please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We don't have an invocation, so everyone can be seated. City clerks report on posting the agenda, followed by roll call.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The agenda was posted on Thursday, April 28th at 6:32 PM. Councilmember Armaderis is absent. Councilmember Bracco?
Here.
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton?
Here.
Councilmember Marx?
Here.
Councilmember Tovar?
Here.
And Mayor Blankley.
Here. Okay, under orders of the day, we have none. Under 1.7 employee introductions, we have someone from FIRE, firefighter, paramedic, and Chief Wyatt will be making the introduction.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and honorable counsel. It's my pleasure to introduce firefighter, paramedic Walter Kanashiro. Hopefully, I get that right. He was born and raised in Castro Valley, California, where his parents currently live. He also has an older brother, Andy, who currently resides in Las Vegas. Both his parents are Japanese, and through them, Walter was able to learn how to speak, read, and write in Japanese. Walter's favorite hobbies includes traveling to Japan, along with listening to movies, going to the movies, trying out new foods and drink spots, collecting collectibles, and playing video games. However, Walter also grew up playing basketball and also competed competitively in junior golf nationwide for nine years. Walter realized in his junior year in high school that he wanted to pursue a career in the fire service after he had his first interaction with the fire department on a 911 call for his mother. Walter went to Chabot College in Hayward, graduating with a double associate's degree in fire technology and fire prevention inspector, and he also completed a firefighter-one and EMT academy. Shortly afterwards, he worked as an EMT for three years, and then he went to paramedic school in 2017 in the College of Siskiess and worked as a paramedic for Santa Clara County AMR for about one and a half years. He's had an opportunity to work for Alameda Fire Department as a firefighter, paramedic, and volunteer with them as a reserve firefighter for four years. Walter feels very fortunate and honored to have the chance to work in the city of Gilroy as a lateral firefighter, paramedic. He has been dating his girlfriend for seven years, and they live in San Jose. Walter looks forward to an exciting and long-lasting career here in the city of Gilroy. And I'll just go ahead and say a couple words.
Thank you for the intro. Hi. My name is Walter Kanashiro. Good evening. I'm very thankful and fortunate for this opportunity to be able to serve here and work here. It's been two months since I came onboard, but everyone has welcomed me with open arms, and I've had a great experience so far. Two months have gone by pretty quick, but I'm very looking forward to a long career here, so thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, and we have four new employees with Public Works, three with Parks, and one with Streets, Wastewater, and Trees. Is that going to be Daryl?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, counsel. We actually have three tonight. One couldn't make it, so we'll work with that. Jonathan? I'd like to introduce Jonathan Castro from our street sewer operations team. He says he's excited to join our agency. Jonathan possesses numerous maintenance skills with experience in general construction, cargo companies, professional painting, underground construction, foundations, trenching, and conduit installation. That's about a bit. He's a native of Gilroy and attended Gilroy High School. Jonathan is a big sports fan, including baseball, football, basketball, and coaching. He didn't tell me which teams those are, but I'd like you to please welcome Jonathan Castro.
I just want to say I'm thankful for the opportunity, and I'm happy to work for the city of Gilroy.
Welcome.
Jacob? Our next new member is Jacob Gomer. He's also excited about joining our team. He's joining the Parks Program. Yeah? Okay. He's currently living and grew up in Hollister, and he graduated from San Benito High School in 2021. He's currently pursuing an associate's degree in water resource management at Gavelin College. That's pretty exciting. His free time, he enjoys riding dirt bikes, golfing, and just spending time outside. He previously worked as a line cook in a restaurant and experienced as a diesel mechanic. Please welcome Jacob Gomer.
Thank you. I'm really excited to get to work for the city of Gilroy, and I look forward to getting to work with all the wonderful people here and get to provide for this great community.
Thank you.
Sunny? Last but not least. Kind of in transition, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Please welcome our new member of our Parks Team, Sunny Old Elk. He's transitioning from our Parks and Rec Team.
Yep.
Yep. He's a member of the Crow Tribe in Montana, which is pretty cool. He grew up on that reservation there. He's also played some semi-pro basketball, so don't pick him up on a one-on-one. He moved in Gilroy in 1999 after meeting what he calls a Cali girl. So 15 years of working in high-tech in Cisco Systems and Comcast Cable managing and different call centers. He previously worked, as I said, for the city of Gilroy Recreation Department. He's also involved with youth and adult programming or program manager, and anything baseball or basketball, you can run it. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. He's also pickleball advocate for our city of Gilroy residents. He's a lifeguard, swim instructor, and a pool manager. He enjoys working outside and being of service to the city of Gilroy. Please welcome Sunny Old Elk.
I just want to thank you. The transition has been smooth, so I'm really excited to be at one of Parks. Thank you again.
Great. Thanks. Okay, keeping in the spirit of fun things, we have three proclamations tonight. The first one is for Bicycle Awareness Month, and I understand that we have Luis Ramirez here who's going to be accepting the proclamation as soon as I read it while I meet you down at the podium. Okay. Whereas the city of Gilroy joins cities and counties throughout the county in promoting May as National Bike Month and the 18th of May 2023 as Gilroy Bike to Wherever Day. And whereas Gilroy acknowledges that walking and bicycling are successful transportation modes, promoting healthy living alleviates traffic and parking congestion, reduces air pollution, and decreases fuel consumption. And whereas both National Bike Month and Bike to Wherever Day are effective in converting drivers into pedestrians, bicyclists, and educating citizens about the environmental importance of walking and biking to school or work regularly. And whereas Gilroy's efforts to promote Bike to Wherever Day 2023 include an Energizer station at Christmas Hill Park staffed by the Parks and Recreation Commission and volunteers. Now therefore, I, Marie Blankley, Mayor of the city of Gilroy, on this first day of May 2023, along with my colleagues on the city council, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Bicycle Awareness Month. Thank you. Okay, we have two more, and these will both be presented to our Community Development Department. Sharon Goey, I think, will be the one accepting them on our behalf. And one is Affordable Housing Month, and the other is Building Safety Month. Whereas affordable housing is one of the cornerstones of democracy and part of the American dream, and whereas our communities thrive when all families have a safe, stable, and affordable place to call home, and whereas the city of Gilroy welcomes efforts to produce, protect, and preserve the supply of affordable housing options. And whereas COVID-19 pandemic both highlighted existing housing instability and homelessness crisis and has further increased the need for affordable housing and recovery. And whereas the process of economic recovery will be gradual, the city of Gilroy is committed to the advancement of housing options for various levels of income, including the addition of smaller homes and neighborhoods. And whereas the city of Gilroy, together with organizations throughout Silicon Valley, is dedicated to providing safe, stable, permanent, and affordable housing to all members of the community. And whereas the city of Gilroy has partnered with local agencies and community members to organize Affordable Housing Month to encourage the sharing of best practices, opportunities, and solutions to provide affordable housing. Now therefore, I, Marie Blankley, Mayor of the city of Gilroy, on this first day of May 2023, along with my colleagues on the city council, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Affordable Housing Month and encourage Gilroy residents to participate in Affordable Housing Month activities. And now, yes. And the second one kind of goes along, Building Safety Month. Whereas the city of Gilroy is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest-quality codes to protect us in buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as wildfires, floods, earthquakes, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our communities' largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas "It Starts With You," the theme for Building Safety Month 2023, encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And lastly, whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, Marie Blankley, Mayor of the city of Gilroy, on this first day of May 2023, along with my colleagues on the city council, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Building Safety Month and encourage Gilroy residents and businesses to join and participate in Building Safety Month activities. Well, thank you so much for that, Mayor and council members. We have actually multiple team members here tonight, so I just want to thank them. This is all teamwork about affordable housing and building safety. And also, I want to do a plug for all the events we've been planning for the month of May. We actually have nine events planned for a variety of things regarding affordable housing and building safety. If I have to talk about all of them, I'll probably stand here all night, but we have all the flyers out there in the lobby. Our team's been, you know, really working hard on all of that, so please take a look at those and also help us with outreach, let other committee members know about this. So, thank you so much. Thank you. I saw that, too. All of the events are posted on the city's Facebook page, maybe other places, too, but they're already out there, so Buntamay is going to be busy with lots of things to do. Okay, presentations for the council, 3.1. Do we have any speakers wanting to speak on items not on tonight's agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We have three speakers. The first is Jeff Worth, followed by Robert Sepeda, followed by Ron Kirkish.
Very good. If your name was called, could you please come to the front? Yes, you're speaking, but there were three, and I only see one. Okay. Go ahead.
All right. I'm here to actually plead for our city, for our downtown. The city council, I mean, the Downtown Business Association, Visit Gilroy, Economic Development, we've all worked very, very hard to have our downtown be a place that is clean, safe, and inviting to families. I'm here to plead for the downtown because we had an event here on Saturday night. It was an unsanctioned event. There were no permits. There were noise, air pollution. There were parking problems because of the excessive cruising. There are people over at Predator Archery that could not get out of parking places because the line of cars that were held up by stoplights. There were a number of pop-up vendors. There's reports of four people getting sick from one of those pop-up vendors outside near Old City Hall. There was a sighting of public urination on the steps of Old City Hall. There was reports of underage drinking and a lot of Cars People and just a lot of vendors. And I have to tell you, when the GDBA does an event, we go and get the proper permits, the health department comes in, they're even checking the temperature of our water for hand washing, and these vendors are not held to any of those standards. So this clearly is not safe, not clean, not a place where you want to bring a family. And frankly, when I think about how hard all of us in this room, everybody up there in the diocese and these other organizations I spoke of are working, this is really a serious step backwards. So I want to create a sense of urgency, we need to get something done and get it done right away. Other cities are not standing for this kind of behavior on the cruising, and I don't think we should either. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Robert Sepeda. I wanted to address some concerns that have been occurring in our state. We all want what is best for the person sitting next to us, in front of us, and behind us. That is a no-brainer. It can be done if everyone participates. Teamwork makes the dream work. That cannot be achieved if someone or a group believes the opposite. Big government was never intended for the United States. We are limited government. There is a reason why we have a federal, state, county, and local elections. The system is for bottom to up, not top to down. Abraham Lincoln once said in his Gettysburg Address, "Government of the people, by the people, for the people." Unfortunately, the Golden State has been departing from their people. According to the Mercury News, "South Bay Church fined $2.8 million for COVID violations hasn't paid his cent as lawsuit drags on." Calvary Chapel San Jose, located north from here, is one of many to be penalized during lockdowns. We all know that is a complete violation of the First Amendment. However, most churches did shut down because they can't afford these preposterous fines by the state. They would be in debt for life and, worse scenario, forfeit their property rights and liberties to a big state. Other examples are current bills being voted in the state Capitol, SB 596 and AB 1078. Both these bills are regarding the California Education Code. AB 1078, in short, would monopolize all school districts to be controlled and operated by the state establishing a single curriculum for all public education. SB 596, on the other hand, will prosecute parents and individuals of the local community to be fined between $500 to $1,000 and/or one year in jail. It says for harassment, but if you read the bill, you will see that it is false. Harassment already is illegal. So is public disturbance. Parents don't go to school board meetings to commit crimes. They go to tell board members they are doing something wrong. These continuous attacks and regulations in the name of democracy are not democratic at all. They are weaponization against law-abiding citizens. We need to contact our local assembly members, House representatives, and supervisors to tell them to stop going on, stop going against the people of the state of California. Big government has no place in the land of the free and the home of the brave. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, council, community. At the last meeting, the issue of Silicon Valley Clean Energy was brought up. Now, originally, Silicon Valley Clean Energy, they said that they were going to be carbon-free. But then we found out last week that they are going to be burning wood, all kinds of carbon. They're going to be burning natural gas. They say hybrid natural gas. It's just nitrogas. This is CO2, CO4. I mean, this is the stuff that they closed down Moss Landing for. And they're closing down our other facilities, too, like Diablo. They're saying, "We don't want that kind of stuff." But yet, we now have Silicon Valley Clean Energy going against what they promised. Personally, I'm not against biomass. I'm not against natural gas. But I do think that Silicon Valley Clean Energy owes us an answer for why they're doing it. To me, it's a tacit admission that they cannot provide our community with the clean energy that they specify they're going to do. And I want to know why. They need to tell us why they cannot meet the requirements that they specified themselves. So I hope that you all will consider asking somebody, one of their executives, come here and explain to us what's really going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that conclude?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you all. Closing, 3.1. Moving on to reports of council members. Councilmember Bracco?
Yes, with our long agenda tonight, I'll hold my comments until our next meeting.
Okay. Councilmember Armaderis is absent. Councilmember Marx?
Yes, I will speak fast. At our last board meeting, Gilroy Gardens presented their strategic plan for the next two years. If it wasn't for COVID, the Gardens would be celebrating their 22nd year in business. In 2024 and 2025, Wild Wood will be the featured nighttime experience targeting people over 10 years of age. Fantastical Flower Festival is still happening. If you haven't seen it yet, please go and enjoy this event before June 1st. They have delicious flower cookies on sale at Sugarplum and adult floral beverages if you are so inclined. Bonfanti slash Garden is being renovated and will be open in June right before the summer heat. Summer camp nights are returning. The Great Big Boo will be returning in October, and a new event, North Pole Nights, will be the winter feature during the December holidays. Gilroy Gardens has set a goal of 440,000 visitors coming to the park this year, earning an income of $20 million. As Gilroy Garden says, "Fun is their business," so I am encouraging all of you to come out and play at Gilroy Gardens. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you. From the Valley Transportation Authority Policy Advisory Committee, VTA, in collaboration with the city of San Jose, city of Santa Clara, Santa Clara County, and Caltrans recently completed the Central Bike Way Study, a two-year feasibility study to identify a preferred alignment for a bicycle superhighway spanning from Santa Clara-Sunnyvale border to north of San Jose, Berriessa, Bart. After completing a thorough public process and detailed analysis, the VTA PAC recommended that the VTA Board of Directors adopt the Central Bike Way Study final report and a 10% basis of design concept plans. The Central Bike Way will be the first bicycle superhighway in the Bay Area. Planning and implementation of a countywide bicycle superhighway network falls under Business Line 2 of VTA Strategic Plan, delivering projects and programs. The project also helps achieve VTA Strategic Plan value of sustainability by making it easier for people to travel by bicycle instead of by car. Lastly, in Gilroy, bicycles are essential transportation for many who need to get around. This might include traveling to your job, errands, or taking kids to school. We are connecting Gilroy residents that have an extra bicycle to Gilroy residents that need one. We are looking for bicycles to be donated. Please check those side yards and garages for bicycles in working condition, and we will get a match with someone who needs one. We have made 165 matches since launching. All the details are online by searching Gilroy Bike Match. May 18th will be three bike Energizer stations in Gilroy to support Bike to Work Day. My office will be hosting one of them at the Gilroy Transit Center from 5:30 AM to 8:30 AM, and happy Bike Month and happy Affordable Housing Month. Thank you.
Councilmember Tovar. I'm sorry, Councilmember Klein?
I have no report.
Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick comment. I want to thank the citizens. During my weekly run walk around downtown, I saw some folks cleaning up our new parking lot, and I just want to thank them for going out of their way and making sure that that parking lot stays clean. So they asked me not to mention their names, but I just want to thank them for the work that they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and for my report on Bike to Wherever Day, May 18th, that's at Gilroy Gardens, my office, that means me, will be riding around the park, celebrating that day with everybody else who's there. Hopefully, everyone can come out. Starts at 5:00, goes till 8:00, and you just get to ride around the park. It's not open for anything but that, so it's a really fun day. Caltrain Policy Group. The subject there is grade crossings, grade crossing separations. And we've got constantly talking about that, but we're going to really hit it hard, May 25th. All city representatives will be there in person in Palo Alto to really look at all the places in Santa Clara County and north, actually, for where the electrification is going to need to include grade separations. As of right now, there are none in Gilroy. There could be up to three in Morgan Hill. And lastly, city administrator and I, and the mayor of Morgan Hill, last Friday toured, also with one of county supervisors, Otto Lee, toured what is so far under construction for high-speed rail. And that included a couple of viaducts, they call them, one that was 4,000 feet long, 3/4 of a mile, 65 feet up. We got to climb to the top of it. So we're seeing the pieces that will, in the next few decades, come together. But it was an interesting tour. That concludes my report. All right, under Council Correspondence, 5.1, that's in our packets. Under number six, future council-initiated agenda items.
Yes, Mayor, I have a question.
Okay.
When is, will we find this here, my notes? When is the updated zoning code going to be on the agenda? I haven't seen it on the matrix. Jimmy?
Work on that project will occur over the summer, and councils should see it in the fall.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm not sure if these are two items for future agenda. Maybe they're offline, but I want to acknowledge and also respect the two gentlemen that came up. First one is regards to unsolicited events, mainly the vendors. I know that's been a big issue. I got many calls from our business owners this weekend, and I'm not sure if that's something that we can have further discussion and make sure that who is responsible, who's cleaned that up, and if they're following the correct process. Again, I'm not in favor of eliminating events, but I think that we need to have some sort of protocol set, so again, that we're protecting not only our businesses, but also the folks who want to have events downtown. So I'm not sure if that's a future agenda item or...
You would have to, if you want it to be a future agenda item, you would make that request and see if the council supports it. We are already doing the standing committee where things can be, I mean, it seems redundant.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, I don't know if it's something that can be reported back.
What are you asking?
So maybe, Jimmy, is that something we can look into and report back in regards to what's currently in our steps and what we can do to sort of assist our businesses?
I'm sorry, I just don't, I'm not sure. We last spoke about the vending ordinance.
Right.
We've spoken about the downtown committee, so I could bring you back, but I'm not completely sure what could be helpful.
Right. Well, again, I guess specifically unsolicited events, you know, where, again, you know, again, I encourage everybody to have events, but I mean, are we requiring, you know, permits for certain events or for all events?
We require the permits. The problem is people coming here anyway. They don't get the permits, and we don't know about it till they're here. And so how to regulate that or how to come down on that is the issue, correct, Jimmy?
Right. So nobody's held responsible for the messes that's left afterwards.
Please.
These are extremely difficult because it's hard to pinpoint a true organizer. And to give you an example, we had an event maybe at the end of last summer, and we issued numerous citations, which is the most we can really do, and none of those citations held up with the hearing officer because of the fact that you couldn't really point to who was organizing it and who was in charge. So the majority of activities that folks do in those events are protected, and there's nothing wrong with them. It is a percentage of folks who, in any event, tend to break the rules and tend to make things more mobile for everybody else, but it's certainly a challenge. And we, you know, we just encourage people to call the police. Saturday nights, when these kinds of events occur, we can get 250 calls in an evening.
Yeah.
And so we do get overwhelmed. But when we do know they're coming, and occasionally we do, we are able to head off some of the more undesirable activities.
Okay, thank you. And then the second one, in regards to Mr. Kirkish's comments about Silicon Valley Clean Energy, is there a way that we can have somebody report to us regarding those issues that he brought up? Jimmy?
If that is what the majority of council wishes, we could reach out to Silicon Valley Clean Energy. They're always willing to come and present and talk about their programs. We could do that.
Okay, so Councilmember Tovar is asking if a council majority wants to hear a presentation from Silicon Valley Clean Energy. Are they already scheduled for a presentation at some point this year?
If that is what the majority of council wishes, we could reach out to Silicon Valley Clean Energy. They're always willing to come and present and talk about their programs. We could do that.
Okay, so Councilmember Tovar is asking if a council majority wants to hear a presentation from Silicon Valley Clean Energy. Are they already scheduled for a presentation at some point this year? Council?
If it's just targeted at this subject, not some long presentation?
Right, no, that's all, yeah.
Or could we ask them to email us an answer, or something like that?
Yeah, no, and I think after, if we can just ask for that correspondence, and if we decide later we want to invite them for, you know, to come present, then I'm okay with you.
Well, if you want the council to vote on whether or not to have a presentation, we need to do that. If you're okay with getting an email response...
Yeah, no, we're here with the email response.
Okay. Is that, can you handle that then, Jimmy? Okay, great. So that's what we'll do. Okay, thank you. All right, consent calendar. Is there anything to be removed from consent? I trust everybody saw the one change in the minutes, or the minutes changed, so the minutes. And I do need to go to public comment before there's a motion, so I'm just asking if there's anything to be pulled. No? Okay. Opening public comment, then?
No speakers, Madam Mayor.
All right, no public comment now.
Move to the calendar.
All right. Motion made by Councilmember Bracco, seconded by Councilmember Klein. Okay. Digital voting is allowed, but I don't know.
I'll go ahead and speak as well. Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blinkley.
Yes, and that passed unanimously with the revised minutes. Okay, bids and proposals, 8.1, award the purchase of a Type III fire engine in the amount of $415,672.91, utilizing CalFire Tag-On Contract Number 1222321B. Leanne?
Good evening. As council may recall, the fiscal year '23 budget includes the purchase of a Type III fire engine, and staff is recommending this purchase be completed via the CalFire Tag-On Bid that's available to the City of Gilroy in the amount of $415,672.91. This purchase replaces our current 1999 Type III engine that is 24 years old. When the budget was prepared in 2021, our thought was to pursue this purchase through the financing process we use for the two Type I fire engines. However, interest rates aren't currently favorable as they were back then, and so at 5.5%, we just don't feel that that's the best approach for us to take. And given that we do have funds available in the fiscal year '23 budget in Fleet Fund, staff is recommending that we just move forward with this as an outright purchase. The Type III fire engine provides several benefits for wildland firefighting operations. It has mobile attack capabilities, which means the vehicle can be driven and extinguish the fire simultaneously, and this saves critical time and prevents rapid fire spread. It also allows us to access wildland urban interface areas that surround Gilroy. It can also be used during the rainy season to access areas that are subject to flooding or narrow roads that are inaccessible in a Type I fire engine. Golden State Fire Apparatus has provided the proposal that was included in the agenda packet for the Type III engine. It will be built by Boise Mechanical Equipment Fire Trucks per the specifications that were included within the proposal. CalFire has purchased a large quantity of these engines and have had really good luck with them, and we also are aware that other agencies similar size to Gilroy have also purchased on a Tag-On the same Type III engine, City of Seaside, Santa Cruz County, North Monterey County, et cetera. There's a few other agencies listed in the staff report. The specifications have been reviewed carefully by the Gilroy Fire Department, and the department recommends moving forward with this purchase. And once approved, the Type III engine will take about 12 to 18 months to be constructed. I'd like to thank Acting Division Chief Lopez and Chief Wyatt for their expertise in reviewing the detailed specifications. There are a lot of pieces and parts and intricate details associated with purchasing a piece of equipment like this, and I couldn't have done it without their assistance. So like I said, this will replace the current 1999 Type III fire engine that we currently have. That's 24 years of service. 15 years is really the best practice for a frontline piece of equipment before we move it into reserve status. So we've gotten a lot of extra years out of our current Type III. And with that, we'd like to move forward using funds in the Fleet Fund for this purchase, and we would move forward with placing the order, and then we will pay out the funds at time of delivery. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and we have Acting Division Chief Lopez and Chief Wyatt here if there's specific technical questions.
All right, thank you. So questions before, yes, go ahead, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. And Leanne, you know the question I'm going to ask, right? I see that this company is based out of Sacramento. Is this the closest or the only company? Or, because, you know, I'm all about local, right? So I'm just curious, is 350 miles or however far Sacramento is, is that the closest?
Yeah. So for these specialized pieces of equipment, there's only certain vendors and brokers that we can work with for these types of vehicles, and to get the economy of scale pricing that we're able to get through the Tag-On Bid Price, we want to go through an existing bid like the one that's available that CalFire has used.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge and say thank you for including the Gilroy Firefighters Local 2805 in the purchase as well. That's something I brought up a few years ago, but, so I just appreciate you including them in the part of that.
And they were included before? I just didn't say it like I said it tonight, just for you.
Okay, and I'm just going to say for the record that, you know, we just bought two brand-new Type I engines, so this is the third, right? Two Type I, this one is the third engine, but this one's a Type III, so it's a lot of improvements. Okay, any members of the public wishing to speak?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
All right.
So move.
Closing public comment.
I'll second.
So we have a motion to award the purchase utilizing CalFire Tag-On Contract Number 1222321B, and seconded by Councilmember Marks.
We can do both of these at the same time.
Oh, award the purchase and authorize the city administrator to execute the purchase contract documents. Okay?
Yes.
And we can vote digitally?
Councilmember Klein, you can vote on aye or nay.
And that passes, I'm saying unanimously, but that is with one absent, right? Okay, 8.2, award a contract to Tykert Construction for the fiscal year '23 Citywide Pavement Rehabilitation Project, Number 23PW278, and approve a total project expenditure of $6,688,412 for our streets. Yes, Daryl?
Make it good, Daryl.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, Council, thank you. Super excited tonight about this project. This is year number three of our pavement rehabilitation program, so we've had great success over the last couple of years, so super excited about kicking this one off. It's the biggest one yet, so let's get into the particulars. A little bit of background, November 16th of 2020, council approved the capital improvement program for fiscal year '21 through '25, and then council adopted the fiscal year '22 and '23 biennial budget, June 7th of '21, and adopted the city's five-year street repair program on September 13th, 2021, so this will be our third year. Fiscal year '23 projects will provide pavement preventative maintenance and rehabilitation of 116 street segments throughout the community. Each treatment improves the PCI a minimum of 10, depending on what type of treatment we use on each of the applications. Here is a map around town of what you're going to see this year. All the highlighted areas are the projects that are on the project here. You'll also see FID, or, excuse me, four bid alternatives denoted there in purple, bid alt 1, 2, 3, and 5, or skipping 4 because 4 and 5 was the same segment up there, it's just a different application, so we chose 5 instead of the bid alternate 4, and we'll get into what those are. So I want to describe a little bit about our bid process of how we drive these projects. Projects with various locations, it's typical for staff to scope a base bid that is estimated within the projected budgets. However, we have bid alternatives incorporated into the bid to determine if additional work can be completed within the budget. In our case tonight, we were able to identify additional funding from SB1 and gas taxes. Both of these revenues overperformed estimated revenue incomes, thus creating a positive fund balance to supplement the road projects, and we'll look at those in more detail down the road, but that's why we're moving from 3.6 to over $6 million project tonight due to SB1 funds and extra gas taxes that we're able to provide. Project scope, again, our base bid was 116 road segments at various locations, which you've just seen. It includes pavement resurfacing, milling, and asphalt overlays, pavement striping and markings, traffic signal loop replacements, installation of ADA-compliant curb ramps at each location, and the adjustment of utilities to grade when we have to grind down the street The bid alternate 1 that you saw up on the map is on Santa Barbara Drive from Third Street to Montebello Drive. This is a mill and asphalt overlay, pavement striping and marking, adjustment of utilities as we talked about. Bid alternate 2 is also a mill and asphalt overlay on Mantelli Drive from Cali de Lourdes to Santa Teresa Boulevard, includes the pavement striping and markings, traffic, signal loop replacement, installation of ADA compliant curb ramps along the way with the adjustment of the utilities as well. Our third bid alternative is on Montebello Drive from Santa Barbara Drive to Rin Avenue. This also is a mill and asphalt overlay, pavement striping and markings, adjustment to utilities. And the big one, bid alt 5 is Leasly Road, which we hear a lot about in Public Works on a weekly basis of issues out there from San Ysidro all the way to the city limits. This is a mill and asphalt overlay in conjunction with the full-depth reclamation, so we're digging this out and replacing it with a full section out there because it's such bad shape. Includes our pavement striping and markings, traffic signal loop replacements, because we'll grind those out with the new pavement, installation of all ADA-compliant curb ramps along the way with the adjustment of the utilities. Our bid process, we were advertised in the San Jose Mercury News and City website March 10th to 2023 per our procurement process. Our bids were opened on April 3rd. Staff received these three bids. The lowest responsive bidder was Tykert Construction. The project cost for the base bid was $3.6 million, which is about where we've been over the last few years, but we added the bid alternatives 1, 2, 3, and 5, as you'll see there. Again, Leasly being the big-ticket item, $1.3 million just for that project alone. The total bid's coming in at over $6 million, and the contingency, 10%, $608,000. Total bid plus contingency is $6,688,412. The funding sources for these projects are road funds, SB1, our Measure B funds, gas taxes, and general fund. As you'll see here, our general fund has not changed. We have not upped that contribution from our general fund from year to year, still at 1.6 as council has committed to, but you'll see an increase from our gas taxes. That's $2.8 million from our gas taxes and extra money from SB1 at the top, at the $1.3 million contribution. Tonight, we looked at recommendations would be adopting a resolution of the City Council of the City of Gilroy mandating the budget for the City of Gilroy for fiscal year 2022, '23, and appropriate proposed expenditure amendments, and to award a contract to Tykert Construction in the amount of $6,083,74.35, with an additional project contingency of $608,37.65, for a total construction cost of $6,688,412 for the fiscal year '23 Citywide Pavement Rehabilitation Project, Number 23, Public Works 278, and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and associated documents. Now, answer any questions that you might have tonight on this project.
I've got one off the bat, Daryl, because you started saying that this is year three. Is this not year two?
Well, when I first came here, we had a pavement project going on in '21 during COVID, so it's not of the five-year program. But we actually had a citywide one that I walked into when I started here. So for me, this is my third pavement project.
Third year doing this, but this is, yes, just to not confuse the public, the five-year plan that we started, that we funded two years, this is two of five. We are about to resume the rest of year one. Year one isn't even finished because the rains, so that's going to get finished. People are going to be seeing a lot of street maintenance work, and this $6.6 million is for the second year that we'll be starting, right, different segments. And then in our next budget cycle, we'll be looking at three and four, so I'm hoping that it'll become much more evident to people that we are really focusing on the condition of our streets.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. Daryl, thank you so much for the presentation, and obviously, I'm going to ask you the same question here. You mentioned about the three bids. Do you have a slide on the other? I just want, if you didn't, maybe because it looks like Tykert's also from Sacramento, correct?
They're all over the state here, so let me...
I'm just saying, we're about to give almost $10 million to Sacramento here, but again, it's needed. I'm all for it, don't get me wrong, but I'm just curious in regards to the other two bids, what kept them from, and where were they located, and what kept them from?
Mr. Tovar, I'll also point out that local preference is not allowed to be considered in a Public Works project.
No, I know, I understand. Just curious to see what...
Yeah, if you could take a quick look up there, you can see...
I'm already blind, but I'm...
Check your packet. Check your packet, okay?
No, I have, I'm blind, I'm sure.
For some reason, that slide's not popping up on me here, so... Go on here.
Bottom right corner.
Bottom right corner. There, you can see the bottom.
Nope.
Nope. Left, right here?
No, that's...
I would just...
There it is.
Is there a way to get that out? Is there a way to... Okay, there we go. All right, now we can see. You can see the Tykert Construction proposal there on the first column after the engineer's estimate, and then we had McKim and Granite Rock as well on the bids here. So the base bid came in rather close, 3.6 for Tykert, 3.7 for McKim, and $4 million for Granite Rock. And then you'll see some variance in differentiation as you go through the different ad alts, but it was a close bid, which means they were a good set of plans, they're very tight, the detail was there so they could bid the project well, and our engineer's estimate was right on target there as far as I'm concerned, so it was actually a really good, solid bid, the best bid we've had yet so far in the pavement program.
So just looking at Granite Rock, which is located in Woxeville and Aromas, right? You're looking at about $100,000 more, and I understand, we want to save $100,000. But I also understand being, and I appreciate, Jimmy, I understand, I'm not advocating, I know it's, by law, we can't do that, I'm just curious. I mean, it's unfortunate that we're giving our money to Sacramento, not somewhere closer, but that's just my own take on it, so.
Sure, understand.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Bracco?
Yes, Daryl, can you tell the public what you told me earlier about what was left over from last year will be added to this?
Yeah, we have a little over $1 million from our last year's project that's still waiting to be done in our current streets now, and they've been just waiting for the weather to break. They were to begin this week, but then the rain hit again today, so they'll be getting next week to get most of that done. It's mostly slurry seals. Most of the big projects are done, but the slurry seals and capes are the ones that are going to be done this year with all the striping that's been, we've been waiting for.
One of them's set up to roll over $7 million.
This year? If you want to add that to this year, yes.
But that was part of last year's budget, yeah, that's not, yeah, okay. Okay, let's go to public comment.
I have one speaker card, and it's from Gregory Felios.
Hello, Council. I'm just a simple GUO resident who doesn't know much about spending this kind of money, but this is a lot of money, and I want to say, I don't know how it is evaluated if we're getting our money's worth. So if there's an evaluation process that we, the public, can see that these guys are doing their job, and they're doing it on time, as a resident, you know, you see these people out there, you see people working, and I, you know, I'm not sure how long they're supposed to be out there. There's no sign saying, okay, we'll be, sometimes they have a sign saying, we'll be here from this date to this date and what the times are, and they're not even out there. You know, it says, oh, yeah, we're going to be here this time and supposed to be working, and I don't see them out there. I wonder if there's some sort of, somebody who, there's some sort of oversight into what kind of work is being done, and you go out, you go by, and you see a lot of these people, oh, yeah, sure, they're on a break, but you see a lot of these projects that take an awful long time, and I'm not into the construction process, but I want to know what's taking these people so long? We're spending this kind of money. Are they following, is there some sort of timeline that is being followed, and are you, I use the council, are you guys overlooking these people to make sure that we're getting our money's worth? That's what I'm curious about. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other speakers?
No speaker other speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, back to council, or Daryl, if you want to... Okay, back to council, or Darryl, if you want to say anything.
There has been some frustration that Jimmy and I have been hearing a lot about the Valley Water Project that's been going on and on and on, but that's not our project.
I know.
And I'm not in charge of that one, but we're trying to move them along as best we can as partners, so.
Right, and trying to let the public know that those streets are going to get improved outside of this budgeting. That's going to happen, all of Lucesa, yes, which is a big, big, big thing.
Yeah, so you add that, Mr. Bracco, to that number you just said, what's going to go down.
Darryl, can you talk about bonding and inspections that we do? So, you know, we'd like to answer the gentleman's question. There is a lot of oversight and a lot of rules regulating this, so just at high level, Darryl, please.
Sure, sure. Each project like this, we require bonding for the project, which basically means they provide fiscal security. If they do not perform, if they do not install the construction items that they're contracted to do, we can pull that bond, pull that financing, and we can have that done by ourselves or somebody else. So we have that security on every project like this. We also are overseen by the state, the SB1 Board, that we have to make constant reporting of what gets done, what doesn't get done, and I can assure you, we pay no contractor any money until he gets his work done. So if he doesn't show up to get the job done, he does not get paid, and they usually show up, so.
Thank you, Darryl. Councilmember Marks?
I was going to make a motion.
Oh, well, go ahead.
Okay. I'll move to approve.
Okay, we have, can I take these two together?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
It's a roll call, vote for it.
Okay, so the motion is to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Gilroy amending the budget for the City of Gilroy for fiscal year 22, 23, and appropriating proposed expenditure amendments, and to award a contract to Tyker Construction in the amount of $6,80,374.35 with an additional project contingency of $608,037.65 for a total cost of $6,688,412 for the fiscal year 23, citywide pavement rehabilitation project number 23, PW278, and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and associated documents. All right, that motion was made by Councilmember Marks, and it was seconded by, was it Bracco? By Councilmember Bracco. Okay, roll call, vote.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, all right, that passed unanimously with one absent. Okay, thank you. 8.3 is approval of a third amendment to the agreement for professional services and Park Consulting Group in the amount of $379,760 for the Tyler EnerGov land management system project and post-production issue resolution, support, and enhancement services. Hi, Sharon.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the community. Yes, so today we'll be looking at the contract for our permit system. So here's some quick background. The city's current land management system or permit system, Sun Guard, it's very outdated, doesn't have any modern features, modern functionality, and there's no vendor support. So I know the city has decided a while ago that we need to replace that, and the system that was chosen is called Tyler EnerGov. It's a modern system, and it can provide the modern functionalities to better serve our customers and improve efficiency for staff as well. And this involves all development services, so that covers planning, building, fire prevention, hazmat, co-enforcement, and public works, engineering, land development functions. That means all the members from those teams too have been very involved in making significant efforts on this project. So that is the software, EnerGov is the software. Now we'll look at the implementation services. So in December 2021, the city executed a professional services agreement with Park Consulting Group in the amount of $284,000. And the scope of that was to convert the existing functionality from Sun Guard over to EnerGov to maintain customer service. So basically, it is focused on the existing processes in Sun Guard and then built those same processes in EnerGov. Other capabilities that's not associated with the existing processes are not in the scope. That was done in order to expedite the go-live. And then in January 2022, Park Consulting started work on the implementation, and they've done a variety of things with staff that include system design and configuration, developing case types, developing workflows, mapping data, mapping the migration activities, and also they've been managing the project timeline and deliverables, and keeping staff really informed and maintaining the communication, and also proactively identifying, addressing, and addressing issues with other project teams and the third-party vendors such as Tyler and Lynx Technologies, that's regarding GIS. And as the project progressed forward, prioritization for mandatory work plan items had to take place across multiple teams, so staff has been working with Park Consulting, and we developed a revised timeline. The current agreement with Park Consulting, that's that $284,000, has been able to absorb several months of that extended timeline. So now staff recommends an amendment to the agreement to complete those following tasks. So the first, I'll call it the first phase, that's another $181,810, that's through the end of August 2023, and this is to complete implementation. And that'll cover tasks such as finalizing configuration, and then providing user training support, production cutover preparation, onsite go-live support, and post-go-live issue resolution and stabilization. And then another staff recommendation is to extend the agreement further by $197,950, and this is through June 2025. It's almost another two years of post-production issue resolution, support, and enhancement services. And I'll expand that a little bit in the next two slides, on the next two slides. So this is the tasks that I just mentioned to complete implementation. And we're projecting for a, that's what we're still planning for, is a go-live day in the mid-June, early July range, and stabilization through the end of August, and it'll include the services that you see there in blue. And after EnerGov go-live and through stabilization, staff recommends that the city continue the professional services agreement with Park Consulting, and these services will total $197,950, as I mentioned, and that'll be 10 months in the next fiscal year, basically from September through that following June, and then another year, so that's another 12 months of that. And these services will include issue resolution, enhancement services, report development, and fee configuration. And these services will maintain continuity of knowledge and technical expertise, because the consultant has been really providing a lot of that, you know, to support staff, and they're really being serving as the project manager and the system administrator in order to assist the city to move into a modern system. And extending the agreement at this time will also provide predictability and stability of costs. Basically, we're trying to lock in the price right now. And this next phase two, I mentioned earlier that the existing scope is really to migrate the current functionality into the new system, so it doesn't include a lot of the improvements. So the next two years is where we want to be able to make process improvements and also create reports that'll be able to give us the metrics and analytics. Back in February 2020, the council had invested significant resources to modernize the city's information technology, and that includes the enterprise resource planning, the ERP, the city's financial system, and also the land management system, and the total cost was over $3.7 million. This includes multi-year licensing and implementation, and these projects have stayed within budget. And the EnerGov land management system, that is being funded from the city's technology fund, and there are adequate budgetary appropriations and fund balance from the projected savings to cover that cost this year to get it to go-live. And pending council approval, the enhancement services for the next two years in that amount of $197,950 will be part of the budget as well, if council approves it. So here's staff's recommendation to approve and authorize city administrator to execute the third amendment for those two services we just talked about. Thank you so much. And staff is really looking forward to the system go-live and to make further improvements so we can really enhance services for the community, increase, you know, efficiency for staff as well, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. For those who didn't, who, it wasn't totally clear, this is a software package that we're talking about, okay, software package and its support. Okay, Councilmember Bracco, you have a question?
No.
No?
I do have a question.
Okay.
When was the last time it was replaced?
I think Sun Guard is probably 20 years old.
It's 20 years old, thank you.
Even over, possibly. Yeah, it's several, yeah, jurisdictions ago that I worked in that we had that.
I thought we approved it to be replaced like three, four years ago.
As part of that 3.8 million, council approved the purchase and a replacement of several systems, including the ERP, utility billing function, the human capital management software. This is the last piece, and we're now just a few months from being at the end of that project, and once we're done with this project, we have completed all that work that was approved three years ago.
Okay, go to public comment.
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
All right, closing public comment. Any further discussion or questions?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Bracco and seconded by Councilmember Klein to approve and authorize the city administrator to execute the third amendment. Do I need to keep reading?
I think that's it.
Okay.
The third amendment, as described more fully in the agenda.
To the agreement for professional services with Park Consulting Group. How about that? Okay, digital voting.
Yes, sorry.
All right, that's unanimous with one absent. All right, thank you all, we're on to 8.4. Award of a contract to David Powers and Associates, Incorporated, in the amount of $360,069 with a project contingency of $36,007 for a total cost of $396,076 for the 10th Street Bridge at Uves Creek Environmental Compliance Services, Project M1610, and adopt a resolution amending the budget for the City of Gilroy for 2022, 2023, and appropriating proposed expenditure amendments. And it says Sharon, but I see Melissa.
Good evening, council. This is an award of a contract to David J. Powers and Associates for 10th Street Bridge Environmental Compliance Services, and I'll give you a little bit of background first. 10th Street is a primary east-west connector street, and when it is completed, it will connect State Route 101 with Santa Teresa Boulevard, and it will then provide vehicle, bicycle, and pedestrian connectivity between Gilroy's east and west sides. Currently, 10th Street terminates on the east side of Uves Creek at Uves Parkway and on the west side of Uves Creek at Deanza Place, and I'll just give you a little visual on what that looks like. If you look at the bottom of this location map, this is Santa Teresa Boulevard, and then up here on the top in middle, this is Uves Creek. Currently, if you travel up 10th Street from Santa Teresa Boulevard, the street, 10th Street terminates at Deanza Place, and then across the street on the east side of the creek, it terminates at Uves Parkway. So constructing the bridge is going to connect those two points, and when the bridge is completed, there will be one continuous roadway going from Santa Teresa Boulevard to State Route 101. At this time, the city staff is currently seeking grant funding to construct this bridge, and the council has directed staff to begin the bridge design and environmental compliance processes in anticipation of receiving that grant funding. So staff sent out an RFP in June of 2021 for the environmental compliance services, and that includes both California Environmental Quality Act and National Environmental Protection Act services. We received three proposals, one from David J. Powers and Associates, Inc., one from Michael Baker International, and one from MIG. And these proposals were reviewed and scored separately by four city reviewers. I just want to point out that this was a qualifications-based review. We did not look at budget, so the firms were ranked based on how well we believe they could perform the services. The top rank was David J. Powers and Associates, second was Michael Baker International, and third was MIG. And the reason David J. Powers and Associates was ranked highest is that this firm has extensive experience with bridge projects and understands exactly what's needed to achieve both NEPA and SEQA compliance.
And they're local.
Yes, yes, they're out of San Jose. Funding for these services would be drawn from the city's Traffic Impact Fund, which is Fund 425. There are sufficient monies in this fund to pay for these services, and the city council would need to amend the budget for fiscal year 23 to appropriate these funds. So at this time, we are recommending that the council award a contract to David J. Powers and Associates, Inc. in the amount of $360,069 with an additional project contingency of $36,007, and that's 10%, for a total project cost of $396,076 for these environmental compliance services, and that you authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and associated documents, and we're further recommending adoption of a resolution that would amend the city budget for 2022, 2023 to appropriate the proposed funding for these services, and I can answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. Councilmembers, any questions? Councilmember Bracco?
Melissa, is this required for the grant?
It is, there's, the grant that we just applied for has made some commitments in terms of timing, and we would need to begin this environmental process to meet the timeline that we've committed to for that grant. So yes, I think the short answer to that is yes.
So what happens if we don't get the grant?
We will pursue a grant.
And will this have been wasted money?
No, it won't be wasted money. We will have the bridge design and the environmental compliance ready to go so that when we do receive grant funding, it's already in place.
Thank you.
I asked that same question earlier.
I have a question.
Okay.
So is there, it kind of bordered, it goes along with what Councilmember Bracco said, if, God forbid, no funding comes in for another five, 10 years, is this document still applicable?
We might need to update it to do some additional work, but I think that we could probably still use it, and Andy may have things, something he wants to say about that.
Yes, that's correct. SEQA and NEPA documents do not officially expire. They can become dated due to changes in laws, or changes in regulations, or changes in the environment, but you would expect, this is a major job, and this would be a major document, and it will probably have a significant lifetime of, I would think, 10 or 12 years or more.
Okay, so this is money well spent.
Yeah.
Thank you. And if we don't, I mean, we hope to get this grant. We may not know until as late as June 30th. If we don't, doing this work still strengthens our position in the other grants that we apply for, because it continues to show that we are ready to go, so, because I did, I asked that question earlier too. So anyway, that's what I learned, Sharon. Okay, public comment.
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
All right, closing public comment.
Move for approval.
All right.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Tovar and seconded by Councilmember Marks to award a contract to David J. Power and Associates for 10th Street Bridge at Uves Creek Environmental Compliance Services and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and associated documents, and motion to adopt the resolution. Okay, and that's a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, that too is unanimous, minus one absent. Okay, 9.1, emergency shelter zoning amendment. Cindy McCormick is going to give us this report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So a little background, our next item on the agenda is our housing element, and when we received comments from the State Department of Housing and Community Development, which I'll refer to as HCD, they told us that they would not certify our housing element until we made these amendments to city code regarding emergency shelters. Current city code, our zoning ordinance regulates emergency shelters under three sections, specific revisions, the definitions, and our residential use table. State law requires that the housing element identify adequate sites for housing, including emergency shelters, and further regulates development and operational standards for emergency shelters. The government code provides this specificity regarding objective standards for emergency housing, and so the code amendments before you are reflective of this limitation. The draft ordinance includes changes regarding onsite management and security, the maximum number of beds, exterior and interior onsite waiting and client intake area, parking, which can only be limited to the number of staff, not the number of beds, lighting, there's no actual change to the lighting section, length of stay, proximity to other emergency shelters, which is new and allowed under state law, the location of emergency shelters, which would be allowed in the mixed-use zone and the high-density R4 zone, a new definition for emergency bridge housing, a navigation center, and an amendment of our current definition... center, and an amendment of our current definition for emergency shelters based on state law. And finally, changes to the land use table for the R4 and future mixed-use zone. If the first reading is waived this evening and read by title, adoption would be scheduled for May 15. If approved by council at that time, the ordinance would take effect 30 days later. And this effective date would happen before the end of HCD's 60-day review period. With that, staff is recommending that the city council approve the zoning amendment and find it exempt from SEQA, read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading, and introduce the ordinance tonight, and then bring it back in two weeks for actual approval. This concludes my staff presentation.
Okay, thank you. All right, questions of council before I go to public comment? None? Do we have any speakers?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing.
Public hearing.
Public, okay, opening the public hearing at 7:11. No speakers, so closing the public hearing at 7:11. Okay, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Then I wanted to go to the public first. Under Section 1D for parking, it says, "One parking stall shall be provided per employee and volunteer." Does that mean one parking stall each, one per employee and one per volunteer who's on shift?
Yes, that's what I understand.
So we can do that? We're allowed to make parking be a requirement?
Yeah.
Parking spaces. I'm just, because obviously we are told we can't do that in...
We just can't base it on the number of beds.
Right.
Only the number of staff.
The number of, right, people who are driving the cars. Right. But yet we can't, where we have people needing cars to get to work. Okay, just wanted that clarification. And wanted also to point out for those who maybe didn't notice that length of stay in this document is up to 180 days. So it's a six-month, that's how length of stay is defined. Okay? Those are my questions. So if there, if no one else has a question, then we can take a motion.
Excuse me, because of the procedure of the ordinance, this should be three separate motions, actually.
Okay, so the first motion would be for item, item A.
Move, move for approval?
Okay, move by Councilmember Tovar.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Marks, which would be to approve the emergency shelter zoning amendment, that it's exempt from SEQA.
The first one is the SEQA motion to approve that it is exempt from SEQA.
Okay, says digital voting allowed?
Yes.
Uh-oh. I think I got off screen.
Is it a "I" for you, Madam Mayor?
Is it what?
Is it "I" for you?
It is "I" for me.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
It passed unanimously.
Unanimously?
Yes.
Minus one?
Minus one.
Right. Okay, then a second motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading?
Move for approval?
Okay. And seconded by Councilmember Bracco, moved by Councilmember Tovar, seconded by Councilmember Bracco.
Thank you. Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes. Okay, and lastly, is a motion...
Madam Mayor, may I...
Oh, you have to read it. Sorry, that's right.
Thank you. An ordinance of the city council of the City of Gilroy amending the Gilroy City Code, Chapter 30, zoning, Article, I'm sorry, that, what is that number in, XLI, Section 30 dot 41 dot 32, specific provisions, emergency shelters, Article 2, Section 30 dot 2 dot 20, definitions, and Article 11, Section 30 dot 11 dot 10C, residential use table regarding emergency shelters.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
And so now...
Now I need a motion to introduce the ordinance.
Right.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Klein.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Tovar to introduce the ordinance.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes, that's also unanimous, minus one. Okay, thank you. Unless you're sticking around for the next one. 9.2, adoption of the Gilroy 2023-2021 housing element. I feel like we should have a drum roll. Okay.
So bear with me, this presentation will be a little bit longer than the last presentation. But first, we want to thank the city council, the planning commission, the many residents and business owners, service providers, community stakeholders, housing advocates, our consultant team, and lastly, city staff for their contributions to the draft before you. A little background, state law requires that the city update its housing element every eight years. The housing element is part of our general plan. The general plan is updated roughly every 20 years, the housing element every eight years. In October 2021, the city council provided city staff with direction on a number of policies that would be further developed in the housing element, including incentivizing missing middle housing, micro units, accessory dwelling units, and bonuses beyond state law. The draft before you was written in the spirit of that discussion. We've had an extensive community engagement process that began in 2021 and was expanded after we submitted our draft to the state to include targeted outreach to farm workers, seniors, Gilroy youth, and the intellectual and developmentally disabled community. On October 31, we submitted the draft to HCD. We received their comments 90 days later, as provided by state law, and we had meetings with HCD to discuss their comments. And once again, the draft was, before you, was amended in response to HCD comments. On April 20, the planning commission reviewed a draft dated for April 13. That draft was amended to correct typographical errors and better respond to the HCD comments. The draft before you was dated, is dated April 26, and that was released to the public. And depending on your direction tonight, we would intend to submit to HCD on or before April 8, or I'm sorry, May 8. I'm not going to read through this, but the housing element contains several chapters listed here, including a site's inventory. The housing element also contains a number of goals, and the programs implement these goals as provided in your staff report. The state has determined that Gilroy needs to accommodate 1,773 housing units spread amongst four different income categories, and those are shown here. In order to accommodate that, those number of housing units, we looked at pipeline projects. Those are projects that are approved or pending approval. We projected out the number of ADUs that we would see permitted over the next eight years. And then there was a leftover number of units that we had to find sites to accommodate. I wanted to say something quickly about the opportunity sites. Number one, we are not compelling any property owner to build affordable housing on their site. We have simply identified those sites as having the right zoning, the right size, and the right location to get HCD certification. And so you can see here, we've identified sufficient capacity to accommodate the housing, and we also have a little bit of a surplus. And then we also have what we call a no net loss inventory that can be updated outside of the housing element should any of these sites not be developed as the opportunity would allow. I mentioned that we did expanded outreach to farm workers, seniors, and Gilroy's youth, and we also met with the ADD community. Another thing that we've heard from HCD and cities across the state is that we needed to provide more local data in our housing element. So we talked to a number of individuals and service providers to provide that information in our housing element, and that draft reflects that. I want to briefly talk about five programs. I'm going to kind of quickly summarize these for council discussion, and we can go back to any of these. The first program I want to talk about is missing middle housing and allowing triplexes and fourplexes on corner lots in the R1 and R2 zone. This program was included in the draft in October, but without any specificity. And what we heard from HCD is we need to provide more specificity and also quantify the number of units that could be accommodated under this program. So we modeled the program under existing City Code, which allows triplexes and, allows duplexes on lots over 8,000 square feet that meet certain requirements. And so the program before you would allow a duplex, a triplex, or a fourplex on corner lots in the R1 that are over 6,000 square feet. I've shown you the number, the quantification of how many lots would be affected on those parcels in both the 6,000-square-foot range and the 8,000-square-foot range. Additionally, under SB 9, we would need to allow a property owner to basically have four units. It could be two detached homes plus an ADU or a junior ADU, or a duplex plus an ADU and a junior ADU. So the net increase of units from this program would not change. It's just the way it looks on the site. So basically, it would be one building instead of, you know, three buildings, for example. Next program I want to talk about is accessory dwelling units. And this program was modeled after government code, which states that the total floor area for a detached accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed 1,200 square feet. Our current code says that the maximum is 1,000. We're proposing 1,200 square feet to further incentivize ADUs. The reason why this is helpful to the city is that we can count ADUs towards arena. 30% of all ADUs can count towards the very low-income category, 30% towards low, 30% for the moderate. ADUs are a really easy way to meet arena. So that's why this program was proposed. There is a program that says if ADU production is lower than anticipated, we would look at impact fees. We're not committing to change the impact fees. We would just look at it to see if that's a constraint to ADU production. Next program to discuss is permit streamlining. The goal of this is to minimize the time that it takes to review and approve development applications. We hear from the development community that time is money, and so we're trying to reduce that time. So under this program, the planning commission could approve planned development applications that do not require a zoning amendment or a general plan amendment. I would like to say that even if the planning commission approves it, the project can be appealed to the city council. Next program I want to talk about is flexibility in the downtown expansion district and the mixed-use corridor. Under this program, which is pretty open in terms of, there's not a lot of specificity, it would allow 100% residential uses in the expansion district, which it's hard to see here, but it's the, kind of like a pinkish-orange color. And then it would allow flexibility for non-residential uses in the new mixed-use corridor. The goal of this program would be to incentivize extremely low-income housing and special-needs housing in exchange for this flexibility. And I'll also say that three of our downtown districts already allow 100% residential uses. And finally, we've been hearing from our development community that commercial uses are not viable everywhere, especially outside of the downtown core, and we want to try to minimize the number of vacant storefronts if possible. Next program discussion, I believe this is the last one, incentives beyond density bonus state law. This was something that we discussed back in October 2021. No details are provided here, which allows for council discussion in the future. And I will say that we, on Friday afternoon, we received four proposals for our inclusionary policy. So we'll be reviewing those this week and bringing forward a recommended consultant contract next month. And then again, once again, as in the last program, these incentives could be limited to projects that provide extremely low-income housing. Okay, next steps. As I mentioned at the beginning, based on your direction tonight, we would send a revised draft to HCD for their 60-day review. There are a couple of corrections that we need to make, and this is a good thing. We, once, so when a project comes in, the developer estimates how many housing units they're going to propose, and in what income categories they're going to do that. And in some cases, they change that, especially when we don't have an inclusionary policy that requires them to provide a certain number of units. So we have three projects in Gilroy that were actually being advertised for rent at a lower rate, or actually being rented out at a lower rate. And so we've made those adjustments in the housing element, and we've also reported this to the state, which has accepted those changes. We would also send the HCD the comment letter response matrix, and also the statutory compliance completeness checklist. So with that, staff is recommending that you find the adoption of the housing element exempt from SEQA, that you adopt a resolution amending and repealing the Gilroy 2015 to 2023 housing element, and adopting the 2023 to 2031 housing element in substantial compliance with state housing law. And then finally, direct the community development director to submit the housing element and all associated documents to the state, and further authorize the community development director to make changes necessary to make it internally consistent, conformed to state housing law, and address changes or amendments requested by HCD. I will finally say one thing. I feel that this draft is a very strong draft, and I don't foresee HCD coming back with any big changes. But if any big changes are proposed by HCD, we can bring those back to you. And this concludes my staff presentation.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Very well done, very well organized, for me, anyway, the way you explained that. Thank you. I've got quite a few questions. If council members want to go first, I see Councilmember Bracco's got his hand raised. Do you want to, want to go?
What's the timeframe on this? How long is this element good for?
So the planning period is from 2023 to 2031, and sometime a year or two before 2031, we would start this process again.
So those numbers are for all the way to 2031?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and when you said that, like, an ADU would apply towards the housing element...
Towards arena.
How do you know what the rent is? The landlord doesn't have to tell you anything.
Excuse me, I'm just going to get my water. So ABAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments, put together a document that said that based on a rent survey, we estimate that approximately 30%, et cetera, et cetera, of ADUs are rent at these different income levels. And so Gilroy and many, many other cities across the state have been relying on this ABAG document, and HCD has accepted these numbers. So we have ADUs that fall within these categories for the last couple of years.
Okay, and in the report, where it talks about ADUs, it has, for 2018, there were seven, and 2020 was 13. How come you used 2018 and 2020 and not any of the other years?
Well, that was the, actually, also, we reported ADUs in 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021 and 2022. But there was a discrepancy in 2018, or 2020, with the number of ADUs that we reported. And it, I don't remember exactly what it says in the staff report, but essentially... And it, I don't remember exactly what it says in the staff report, but essentially, there were projects that were applied for in 2018 but did not get issued building permits until 2020. So we couldn't count them towards RENA until 2020. So that's where the discrepancy falls.
In the staff report, it has 2018, and then it skips to 2020 and no more after that.
No, so it's just, it's just saying that we're making corrections to that. But in fact, the annual progress report that we've been submitting includes ADUs in those income categories for the last several years.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
May I just ask a question? Because I didn't understand the answer to Councilmember Bracco's question that you were trying to answer with ABAG. And you said that ABAG is a document that everybody's relying on. That's great. What exactly does it say? How many, is it saying a certain percentage of ADUs automatically qualify as very low-income and another percentage automatically? So even if it's a 1,200-square-foot ADU, which is a small house, and it is being rented at whatever the landlord who owns it is renting it for, could be fair market value, it still goes against our very-low-income RENA?
Yeah, so it doesn't, based on the document, and I don't have that before me, so I could be wrong, but I don't think it's based on the square footage of the unit. It's just a general...
Right, that's what I'm saying. It's not based on the square footage of the unit. It just says, it's just assuming that a certain percentage of all ADUs, whatever size they are, and it doesn't even account for how much they're being rented for. And there is no restriction on what the landlord can rent it for. It could be a fair market value rent, but it counts towards RENA. Okay.
Good for us.
Yeah, no, I'm just pointing things out to make sure I'm understanding them correctly and pointing them out. Okay, I have other questions, but Councilmember Marks, you are next.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. You were next. Councilmember Hilton was next. Is that okay?
No, you can go.
Councilmember Hilton. I was just looking this way, sorry.
And if we need to do like more than, like two, more than a round or whatever, I'm totally fine with like holding back on a couple of questions, too.
Sure.
If it gets like that.
Okay.
So, you know, I want to commend staff for making corrections and strengthening the programs, you know, introducing them to our future work plan since the first draft. I mean, that was a huge, heavy lift. You've been doing this for a few years now, so I appreciate that. It's my opinion that the fourth draft is now a true reflection of what Gilroy has produced over its 150 years of existence, you know, especially when it comes to farmworker housing, supportive temporary housing, emergency shelters. A couple of them that are notable to me is, in the first draft, it said we had 284 farmworker housing units, and in the fourth draft, it's, you know, it's come down to 56. To me, that's just, that's just a lot of heavy lifting. That's a lot of truth, like, you know, getting things out there, and it's a place to start so we can see what measurable outcomes we can have. My question was, you had briefly mentioned three properties on the pipeline, I think you said, that don't have the very-low-income, right, or the extremely-low-income. Is that what you were trying to refer to?
There are three developments on the pipeline projects.
Can you name them so we can be specific?
Yeah, so Glen Loma, first in Kern, and then first in, or Hecker Pass.
Instead of trees.
Yeah, so those are the three developments.
Okay, so those are going to be removed, the extremely-low, or the very-low-income that they said they were going to build, that's going to be removed?
So we're going to update the table to be reflective of what is either A, being rented at, or B, the developer said that they will rent them out.
Okay, because I remember you said that in the planning commission meeting, that they are all going to be at the low-income level. None of them are going to be at the very-low-income level.
Yeah, so that was incorrect. After doing a little more digging, we found that they're actually being rented at even lower affordability rates.
Oh, they are?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And is that true also for the Monterey Street affordable housing project?
So that was correct as reported.
It was?
It was correct as reported.
Okay, so it is going to have 20 very-low-income and 73 low-income units, at least proposed. I know they...
Yes.
That's what is supposed to be proposed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I have for right now.
Okay.
And don't forget, the Eighth and Alexander, too, is going to have a lot of very-low-income. Yeah. Okay, Councilmember Marks.
Yes, Cindy, thank you for your report. I have a lot of questions.
Okay.
I'm going to talk, I'm going to first start with the ADU, the 1,000-square-foot to 1,200. I remember, and Councilmember Hilton, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought a few council meetings ago, you had brought up the, you know, that you wanted us to discuss upping the footage to 100 feet, square feet. And so I was really surprised when, you know, I heard today that we had approved this back in October. So I went back and I looked, and all we really looked at was the whole housing element, that all 300 pages of it. But when we got the new housing element, you know, I went through, and I'll be honest, I did not read the whole thing. It was huge, folks. We had almost a 1,200-page packet this week. I did look at some of the red lines. And so the red line was to denote changes, correct?
Yes.
So I'm having a hard time figuring out if we approved it in October, which I do not remember, especially when you were bringing it back up for discussion, which we never had discussion, and then seeing that it was redlined as a correction, moving from 1,000 to 1,200. So that's, my first question is, you know, council didn't agree to this, and that is a small house. And I find it really crazy, if anyone was going to spend the money to build this small house, they're going to charge by $3,500 a month for rent, which is really baffling to me that that would be considered low-income. That doesn't seem to address our issue here. That was one thing.
Can I answer that?
Yes, you may.
And to the mayor, if I could have an opportunity to clarify, too.
Yes, okay, please.
Okay, let's, let Cindy respond.
So you're correct that the October draft did not include that detail. What HCD told us in their comment letter is that we need to provide more programs to, in case we have a shortfall in the sites that are actually built. And so that program was created to incentivize more accessory dwelling units and because, as I mentioned, ADUs help us in the RENA categories. So one, you hadn't seen it before. Two, it was created in response to an HCD comment.
Okay, so I guess I'm thinking, if we just left it at 1,000 square feet, is really 200 more square feet more enticing to people, you know, to build?
Yeah, okay, so...
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm very concerned that this was not brought before. It's like you had asked Councilmember Hilton for a discussion.
Let's stay on the subject of ADUs, then, okay? And Councilmember Hilton, go ahead.
Thank you. So it was a pure coincidence, because I brought that up during our, I want to say that meeting was in March. It was the final workshop, right? Because I pitched the idea in February, came up again in March. I had already known that restricting that 200 square feet, which could be two bedrooms, it could be a bedroom, it could be a bath, was a barrier. I already knew that from watching the process that was happening. So when I mentioned it, community development director Sharon actually got up and said, "We're actually already implementing that." So it got struck, it got struck off that work plan. It wasn't something that was added that we were going to talk about in the future. It was something that was already incorporated, hence now you can see where staff picked it up to put it in there.
To be honest, I don't remember that part of it, but, okay, I will believe you. Something else is...
Are you moving away from ADUs?
I am moving away from ADUs.
Then I would like to ask a question, then.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, because I would like to just keep us on ADUs. It might be easier. So on ADUs, I don't, I'm not so concerned with how staff came up with the recommendations so much as making sure that we prepare the correct and proper housing element that we need to prepare going forward. And adding this 200 square feet to ADUs, I see as solely benefiting, really, the homeowner who's building it, because they can charge more rent for the unit. That's what I see in that 200 square feet. And what I'm concerned about is parking, because for someone to rent a small house, they need to be working, and they probably need to have two people working. And it is not true that in Gilroy, you can get to your job without a car. In Gilroy, we need a car, and we are surrounded 360 by unincorporated areas. We don't even border a city. So is it true that we cannot require one single bit of parking for the added family that's going to live in these ADUs? Because if an ADU is 1,200 square feet and not 600 or 800 square feet, it can be a family. It could even be an extended family.
So I, you asked me a question that I don't have an answer to, because I don't know, I didn't review the ADU ordinance before tonight. There are, the state law does have restrictions on parking, especially within half a mile of transit, but I forget the exact language with regard to...
If you're within half a mile of high-quality transit is the only time you don't. But most of Gilroy is not within half a mile of high-quality transit. Because the only high-quality transit, by definition, is along Monterey. That's the only place. So I'm pointing out that these ADUs that would help us greatly with RENA numbers, even though they aren't actually providing very-low-income housing, it's just because they're an ADU, and ABAG says, therefore, it counts. These can be small homes, and they're anywhere. They can be on any single-family lot where it's not planned. You might have a family living there with children, and you have no idea the distance to the nearest park, because this is not a planned community, like an apartment building, where you're providing some open space for kids to play, and you can't allow parking. So it's a difficult thing, even though I'm aware we need to have this pass, but I'm less inclined to go with the 12, to keep it. I'm more inclined to keep it at the 1,000, so that it's not something that is going to rent for more and will therefore likely require two earners who need a vehicle and perpetuate the problem that we already have in this city with parking. Okay, so that's, those are, yes.
I'm certainly no planner, but I do know that the government code states that parking requirements for ADU shall not exceed one parking space per unit or bedroom, whichever is less. Okay, and that's outside of the half-mile. So if you did have a 1,200-square-foot home that became two bedrooms, you could require two parking spots. But a local jurisdiction can eliminate or reduce that requirement. They just can't, they can't make it go up.
Okay, so where are we saying that we're going to make that requirement? We're not, right?
So then one parking place per bedroom, because a 1,200-square-foot home, folks, is some of our third-street houses. So if there are four bedrooms, that would be four parking places, correct?
No, whichever is less. It's not one per bedroom, but one per unit.
What, I just would like to know for clarity, what parking can we require?
So I don't have the...
Right, I think the answer is none, right?
Can I make a comment?
I think the answer is we can require one parking for the detached ADU, generally, if it's not near high transportation. I think that's the answer.
So the ADU...
On the other hand, I think a J-ADU, which is inside the house, I don't think we can require parking for that.
No, but so for...
We're worried about the detached ADUs.
So we've had detached ADUs built, right? We've had them built. Have we been requiring parking?
I don't think so.
I didn't either. So that answers the question. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so now, go ahead, if you want to move on away from ADUs.
I have a, I have a comment on the ADU.
On ADUs, okay.
Yes, on ADU. I just want to caution everybody, too, that the object of this is to not create more barriers to housing. So by trying to squeeze it out, you know, to 1,000 square feet versus 1,200, based on parking, that's not going to work with HCD. They're going to, they're going to turn that right back real quick, and I can give you a good example, which happened to Morgan Hill, who everybody thinks they've done a really good job on housing. They got a letter back saying that they're not in compliance for their last one, and one of them had to do it specifically for requiring one and a half parking spaces for every studio. That's a, you just can't do that.
Right, so we could do the 1,000 square feet and accept that there's no parking. I appreciate your insight. Thank you.
I guess where I'm coming from is that, you know, I think the public doesn't really realize the implications here, and I know our hands are tied, you know, with the housing element and RENA, but it doesn't make it right. All you have to do is look at your streets and see that they're so overcrowded, this is going to just add to it. Look at next door today, blowing up over the right turn only on Kern Avenue, which was a result from the apartments. I think we're frustrated, and I'm just afraid of the blowout from people when they begin to realize, especially if a 1,200-square-foot ADU, small house, comes four feet from your fence line. Are you going to be happy? They're going to be down here saying, "What happened?" And Cindy, trust me, this is nothing against you. You're just up here answering questions, so this is our frustration. Let me, if ADU is finished, I'm going to go on to another really major concern I have. In one of the red-lined columns or comments, it talks about, oh, where is it? Here it is. Beyond the density bonus, there could be incentives added on to inspire a developer to come and build. That really scares me to approve that, because I don't know what those incentives could be. And if we approve this, we're saying, we're giving everyone carte blanche on what they're going to do. And I'm like, oh, my God, suppose it's, we'll let you build five more stories to your building. You know, all of a sudden, we're sitting here, having to answer to the public, saying, "Well, we didn't know that at the time." What does that actually mean?
So the program does not give carte blanche to developers. The program says that we will review incentives beyond state law. That still needs to be ironed out. There's no specificity under this program for that. And as I mentioned, we'll be coming back to you with, one, a consultant contract to develop an inclusionary ordinance and incentives policy, and we can have a study session to talk about what that might look like. This is only the beginning of the conversation.
Okay, well, then that's somewhat reassuring, that we're not locked in to this, but there is some wiggle room on verbiage of what we would do. Last one that I have, and maybe others up here have the same question. I'm not sure what this statement means, and I'd like you just to kind of clarify it for me, to make sure I'm understanding correctly. For the downtown expansion district and mixed-use corridor, allow 100% residential in the downtown expansion district. What is, see, when I read that, I think of 100% apartments in our downtown core, and I, am I reading it correctly, or is that wrong?
So right now, we do not allow 100% residential in the expansion district. We allow mixed-use. I think we allow 100% commercial.
Cindy, let me interrupt you just for one second. Maybe that's where I'm getting confused. When you say expansion district, are you talking about outside the 4th and 7th?
Yeah, let me, so this is an easier map to look at. So the downtown historic district is in purple, and I, it doesn't have the cross streets, but I think it's, let's see, first, second, third, and 3rd to 7th.
It looks like 7th, yeah.
8th is the purple, and then the kind of pink, or orangey-pink color is the downtown expansion district.
There we go. Okay, okay, that helps. So, so then, if I'm hearing this correctly, it'd be between 1st and 3rd, probably, probably, or 1st and 4th, and then between 7th to 10th. If there's a commercial building, someone could renovate it into total apartments. Is that how that reads?
Yes, so if there was a commercial building in the downtown expansion district, under this program, they can convert it to 100% residential.
I see. Okay, then that makes sense now. All right, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Hilton, you want to go another round?
Yes, please. Thank you. Cindy, I want to talk real briefly about the sites inventory. So, you know, I understand that the sites inventory, you know, is, it's only going to be as reliable as actively managed, right? And you had said that earlier, too, that this is not telling a property owner what they're going to do. There's, there's two properties on there that my, what I thought was a definition of vacant, it says that they are, my definition of non-vacant says that they are vacant. One of those is on, is one of our public buildings on the corner of IFF and Monterey Road. It says that it's vacant, right? But there's a well, there's a parking lot and a building. So is it vacant or not vacant?
It is not vacant, and actually, so I've already had this discussion with the consultant. We're going to correct that in the next draft. We're already aware of that.
Okay, and then there's the other one, too, that the old, was going to be Sumano's Bakery, it's not anymore, but there was 0.55 acres that said it was vacant, but it's a parking lot.
Correct, and that was actually amended to say that it's non-vacant.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing that I just want to get clarification on is that, so this housing element was due January 31st, right? There was no grace period for the city of Gilroy. We're not doing rezoning at all. So it was due January 31st, right? By us, if we give action to adopt this Gilroy housing element, or Gilroy housing element, to approve it tonight, that does not mean it's approved. We can't walk out the door and say, "We did a good job, we're approved." We're not approved until we get that certification letter back from HCD. Is that correct?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have some questions, and then I'm going to go to public comment. So if you could go back to the slide, the one about where you could do triplexes and fourplexes, wherever that one was, yeah, maybe it was there. So, so I'm looking at this kind of the same way I'm thinking about the ADUs. By increasing it to 1,200 square feet, you've made it so that somebody can rent it for a whole lot more, right, by another bedroom there, and probably has to have two earners, can't do anything about parking. So now I'm looking at this and thinking, if this, if the suggestion is that someone with a corner lot that's only 6,000 square feet could put a triplex or a fourplex on it, now you've got, let's say it's a fourplex, you've got up to four families living on 6,000 square feet, maybe without a park in sight, within walking distance necessarily, because this is not planned to have open space nearby. It could be anybody who has a corner lot that's 6,000 square feet. And no parking requirements with that, too? For four families?
So SB 9 has similar restrictions regarding parking as the ADU law.
Yeah, so, okay, so again, pointing out how difficult this situation is for Gilroy. I mean, these, these are state things that aren't necessarily city-specific, which is why it is so important for your local officials to be watching out for what is locally happening and doing our darndest to make sure that we're not doing any more than is mandated. Because in our case, it's going to make a whole lot, the other disadvantage that I see to that particular thing is you're making it less likely that there would be an owner occupying any of those sites. When you have a single-family home and you subdivide it, you might, the owner might still live there and have ADU number one, ADU number two, or duplex, or whatever it is. I mean, they still maybe wouldn't, but it's more likely that they would than in the case where you could just put a fourplex or a triplex in on 6,000 square feet. Now you've got something that, you know, banks charge more for interest on mortgages for that, insurance costs more for that, there are reasons for that. So I'm, I'm not comfortable with that particular one, and would at the very least want it to go back to an 8,000-square-foot lot, which is still pretty tiny for four families. But if that's what you're saying we need to get this housing element passed, then that's, you know, at least that's the lesser of the evils.
Yes, I've been summoned. Hi, I'm Dan Weir from Michael Baker.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. So I think the, the question is, what do we need to get HCD approval? Because again, this is, this is the unique element in your general plan, is the only one that requires a state to sign off on it. And so that's, that's the bit of the art with this, is they, the state is looking for certain outcomes, but they're kind of in subjective terms. They want to make sure that we've got a great distribution and access to opportunity and a variety of housing types. And so what we've proposed in here is based on the best evidence we have, which is what's getting certified by HCD in other communities as they go along. So we've tried to incorporate those and not, not overreach, not overextend for any particular city. So we're, we're doing our best to kind of limit your exposure and, and limit the impacts, but still meet what HCD is looking for. So we think this is a really good program in terms, particularly in terms of the eyes of HCD. They'll respond very well to this. We just did one, and we had a meeting last week, I forgot what day it was for a second, and they, very similar program, and they, they really liked it. The reason they like it is that, like the ADUs and the SB 9 units, these allow a variety of housing types in this, in the single-family areas. And those are what they call the high-opportunity areas. So they're looking for something to occur in those areas. So this is a good program.
Well, and that's fine with the SB 9 stuff. We have to.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the things that we seem to be proposing that is beyond.
Yeah. This is, this is, it's not going beyond any particular law. It's, it's picking up on the same idea that they like about SB 9 and giving them something that's different but similar. And the hope is that that will...
It has the potential, though, for a huge downside.
It'll help, it'll help them go, "Okay, you've done something that's going to get us over the hump and get certification."
All right. Thank you. Seeing no other hands, I think maybe we'll open public comment, or the public, yeah, public comment.
Public hearings open at 7:55, Madam Mayor.
Public, sorry, I'm looking at the, open the public hearing. It's 7:55.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have three speakers. The first one is Terrence Fugazi, followed by Ronald Howson, followed by Ron Kirkish.
Evening, Council, Mayor. Tonight, I'm not going to speak extemporaneously like I usually do. I'm actually going to re-drop the sheet so I can get it all in. I got three objections to the housing element. The first one is the property behind the Sunrise Fire Station. I don't know how we could possibly suggest converting our publicly-owned property surrounded by only single-family homes into 21 units on a limited-access street. Sometime down the road, this property may be needed to expand the fire station to account for population growth, training facilities, vehicles, who knows? And there's traffic and parking issues that could cause, that it could cause, not to mention what it would do to the property values of the people immediately surrounding it. So I don't even know why we would suggest that. The second is Program A10 that we're talking about just now. It creates a fast track to allow demolishing perfectly-good, single-family homes, which I would do as a developer if this went through, replacing them with triplexes and fourplexes. And not just a few places either, every single corner across the city in R1 and R2, over 1,000 locations, many neighborhoods that don't have any multifamily in it, Sunrise, I mean, even up into Eagle Ridge, I think. Add to that, it happens on 6,000-square-foot lots, there's not a veto in here. Most people try to say this is SB 9. It's not, we're actually going past SB 9. A unit's not a unit, an AD unit's not the same as a fourplex unit. Most people in the city, if they knew this was going on, they wouldn't want it happening. Developers will build these. These won't be, this, this will be people like me, because it pencils out. We will be destroying homes in Gilroy to put in fourplexes in places where they don't belong. Next is Program B5, that allows for large-plan developments to be built without currently required input and approval of our elected city officials. It's just a planning commission, regardless if there's any kind of an appeal. It limits also the amount of public input on these. It's never a good idea to limit public input or limit the accountability for our voted representatives, in my opinion. I understand we must meet these mandates and the numbers that are required by the state. I don't think this is the way to get there. I also realize that the housing element is not the change yet of these ordinances, so it'll still have to come through. But it's a plan we're pushing out there in supposed good faith. Now, if you need to vote for this to get Sacramento off our backs, that's great. However, I think if you don't speak up now against some of these specific parts of the housing element, you're implicitly stating that you're in favor of them with a yes vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker. Time, next speaker. Okay.
Hello, I'm Ronald Howson, and I, along with two other partners, own properties that have been assigned numbers for the housing element. We didn't know of these assignments, and from what I understand, the owners, there are really no consequence to the owners. We don't need to sell, we don't need to develop, no requirement for us. This is just hypothetical. I think you called it speculative or something like that. So I understand that, and I'm very relieved, because then we can do, do as we want, and we can still plan. But in light of this, I don't understand why a city council member called a partner of mine and asked if we were or were not going to develop in the next eight years, and can our numbers be removed from this housing element. So if the owners have no input, and there is no teeth to do anything with the owners, why would we be asked by a city council member what our intentions are?
Because we can't control city council members. You're welcome to, I mean, that's up to you to...
But it's a contradiction. It's a contradiction because we're told we really have nothing to say about it.
Okay. We don't, these aren't really back and forth, I know, but council members calling up people, they can do that. It's up to you to realize you do not need to respond or take that call.
Okay.
That is not an official, legal, anything. That's a council member maybe overstepping, or maybe not, but anybody can call you, it's up to you to speak to them or not.
But you can understand how it's a, it's a contradiction to what I'm being told by planning is the intent of the housing element.
Can he identify who the council member is?
They can, I will not, but they can identify themselves if they'd like. Okay.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council and community. One of the things that I haven't heard discussed tonight in regards to this issue is impact fees. Who's, how is this going to impact our community? When I bought my house, I had to pay for the utilities that came with the house, including my electricity, my sewer hookups and water hookups, that grass, that all came with the bill for when I purchased my house. When somebody makes these ADUs, these fourplexes or threeplexes, who's going to be responsible? Is the owner of the property going to be responsible for the facilities, or are we taxpayers going to be held responsible? I don't know that answer, but I'm just posing the question. Thank you.
All right, thank you. No other comments?
No other speakers, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then closing the public hearing at 8:01. Back to...
Cindy, an answer to that about the impact fees?
Oh, yeah, yeah. The answer is that there are impact fees. But yes, please, go ahead, answer that publicly.
So, yes, we do charge impact fees for ADUs beyond 800 square feet. There's a formula that's involved with that.
Under 800 square feet, no impact fees?
That's state law.
Right. So, but, right, and it is by square footage, it's not by, based on anything else. So, so those are covered. Okay. Yeah, I don't know if any more needs to be said about the gentleman thinking there was a contradiction. Councilmembers are not city employees, so if a council member calls you, you decide how to handle that conversation. Okay, yeah. All right. Councilmember Marks, do you have something else, or is your hand still raised from before?
No, no, I have something else.
Okay.
One of our speakers, he kind of hit it on the head for me, because it's really niggling at me, these triplexes, fourplexes. If they count the same as two units, three units, as a junior ADU and an ADU with a split lot, that's four units on that particular piece of property, it's certainly a lot less vehicles. And I see the cities benefiting on impact fees when we go from 1,000 to 1,200 square feet. This is a prime example, folks, of state control over local control, and people better start waking up, because we're not Oakland, we're not San Francisco, we're not San Jose. We are Gilroy, and we're not the only city who's fighting all of this in the state. Huntington Beach has a lawsuit against the state. And if they win, that's going to set a big precedent with other cities following suit to say, "We don't want cars everywhere in our street. We are not going to," I mean, as nice as it sounds, you know, for people to ride bicycles, you're not going to get your family and all ride a bicycle to school with all the cars on the road. That's not safe. So I, I, I don't know if this is the time to do it, or if I wait a little bit, but I would like to propose an amendment for me to approve this. I mean, I know staff did what they had to do. I know the consultant did what he had to do, you know, to get this sent, but I am not comfortable with this.
So do you want to make, do you want to make a motion so that we can know what...
Okay, the amendment I would like to make is, there, I guess it'd be two amendments. I would like to revert back to the spirit of SB 9, as much as I hate SB 9, with the split lot, the junior ADU, and the ADU, because there's still your four units.
Well, there could still be duplexes there.
Right. Okay, or duplexes. Okay, that solves that problem. I would like to also amend going from 1,200 square feet back down to 1,000 square feet, and making it in the true sense of an ADU, where you have one to two people, not four to six people. Because 1,200 square feet can hold a lot of people. Let's face it, it's happening already. That's my amendment to this.
Mayor?
Yes?
And I'm going to second that, I just want to share my comments. And again, when, you know, and I agree with 1,000, and I'll tell you why, you know, even with the 1,200, yes, it does allow us to count it as affordable housing, but in reality, and like the mayor said earlier, that's not what's going to happen. And for any of us up here who are truly, truly fighting for, you know, affordable housing, if we're going to allow this to happen, then we're not going to know what these folks are going to be charged, you know? And I just don't see that as affordable housing. So I would be, I would be in support of what Councilmember Marks said, because again, I think that we truly need to figure out what's best for the city. And you're absolutely right, we're not these other big cities. You know, we're Gilroy, and we want affordable housing for, for our residents. And just like, and I commend and I respect every comment that was made, I, I think, you know, bringing it back to 1,000 would not only benefit our, you know, our city, but also benefit the folks who end up renting those.
Yeah.
So I would be in support of your...
Thank you. Okay, I keep going back to Glenoma, the portions where we did not, because we couldn't require parking. And developers can still choose to put parking, even though it's not required, but they did not.
Right.
So there is no parking in certain areas of Glenoma, and now the Class 2 bike lanes have become parking spaces for people, because there was, they have been given absolutely no place to park a car.
Right.
And that's what will happen and continue to happen. Okay, so to make sure we understand that the motion that's on the floor, anyway, is to reduce the ADU to 1,000...
Yes.
...square feet. And what was it with SB, and to...
Get rid of the triplex and fourplex and go back to what SB 9 says.
So, okay, so not do the triplex and fourplex at all, not even on 8,000-square-foot lots?
Um, no, no, because it's not going to be affordable to families. We want affordable...
I know, I'm just concerned about the housing element passage to not go...
How many, see, for me, I would have to know how many corners actually are 8,000 feet, because that's a concern.
That's answered here. That would be 429 lots.
Yeah, but where are they? That's what I want to know. I need a visual.
Okay.
I have, I have a slide for that.
Okay, and Cindy, when you go to that slide for that, can you also address whether or not, God, what was I just going to, oh, yeah, if the same thing going to the 8,000, how, where are those 8,000-square-foot lots? Also, if we amended this program so that it would apply only to existing lots subdivided before tonight, so that people couldn't use what happens tonight just to create a triplex or a fourplex? That would be another thing that I personally would like to see. And we can ask if that can be in the, in the amendment, but you go ahead and answer the question.
Yeah, so this slide shows two things. The pink, the pink, if I zoom in, it's actually, it's hard to see here, but basically, the pink is six, hold on, is the 8,000-square-foot lots, and the blue is the 6,000-square-feet lots. So basically, if we revert to just the 8,000, all the blue goes away.
Can you zoom in a little more?
Yeah. Let me, it's, I can't zoom any more than that.
That's good, but that's quite a bit of pink, isn't it?
Yes, a lot of it.
Hey, I'm right there.
So just, do you want me to go to the slide with the actual number?
That does it for me. I don't know if that does it for you, Councilmember Marks.
It does. I, I'm 8,000. I would go, that's a lot of pink.
Yeah, there's still a lot of opportunity, is the point. Right? And, okay, then would you be open to amending your motion to also include that this only apply to existing lots subdivided before tonight?
Yes.
And the seconder, yes, too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I make a quick suggestion?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt, but because we have to do the sequo motion, too, which would probably apply regardless, I'm wondering if we can table this motion for a moment and go back and have someone make a motion that the adoption of the housing, with whatever changes you're going to make...
You're going to break our train of thought.
I know, I'm sorry about that. But I'm just trying to keep it in a logical order here.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to, to say that this is exempt from sequo? I'll make that, okay, and I'll second it.
And let's take a vote on that, then.
Okay.
Councilmember Rocko?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Aye.
Councilmember Marks? Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll pull back the table motion. So, I'm sorry to break the train of thought, but now you're back in it.
Okay. Okay, so another thing that comes to mind with this motion that's on the table, and maybe Councilmember Klein, I don't know if this is something you want to add, but maybe not having the planning commission have the final approval on, what, where was that, Cindy? In the, and, and why is that a good idea for this housing element? Where the planning commission had final approval on things that, where there was not a zoning?
It's essentially a way to streamline the permit process, to reduce the amount of time that the developer waits to get their project reviewed and a decision made.
But then, the people who the voters have elected aren't, I mean, planning commissioners, we just appoint.
Yeah, I agree. I would want that taken.
Taken out, yeah. Okay, so, so you're adding that and you're seconding it, okay.
Who's remembering all this? Ty, are you reading all this?
I am, all remember, yeah.
Mayor, I thank you for bringing that up. And again, as you all know, that we, we respect our planning commissioners. But again, I don't think it's a piece.
Of course, but that's a bigger deal. Yeah, I don't think the public wants that.
Yeah.
Okay, did you have something else?
Question for Cindy.
Okay.
Just a quick question for Cindy in regards, getting back to the 1,000 to 1,200 square feet. For staff, what is, in your opinion, do you prefer the 1,200 and why, you know, opposed to the 1,000? What's, what's the value there?
So, I don't have a preference either way. I want to make that very clear. The, the program was created consistent with state law that says, I don't have the exact language.
It says up to a maximum of 1,200 square feet.
They can be 1,200.
Yeah, it doesn't say, it doesn't say to be 1,200. It says it can be up to 1,200.
Right.
Yes.
There's the exact language. So, the total floor area under state law for a detached ADU shall not exceed 1,200 square feet.
Right.
And the issue, that additional 200 feet could cause another person in the, in the unit.
Another car. That's how I look at it.
Or more, or more. 1,200 is large.
It could make it more, I would say, attractive that person, to the person that wants that too. So, I don't know, 1,000 to 1,200, it does make a difference. So, I'm kind of on the fence on that.
Yeah.
I know we're kind of compromised on some things. And I think, I kind of agree with Councilmember Hilton about that additional 200 feet. It's not a big reach in the big picture of things either, in looking at that.
No, the issue is that it doesn't help with affordability.
Right.
It's, it's still going to be rented at market rate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, I'm going to reiterate what I said, and thank you, Councilmember Klein. I mean, I, I see that, I do. And, you know, for my vote tonight, I have a few friends who are going to hate me because they're, but again, this is, for me, it's an issue-based decision here and goes back to affordability. You know, and if we are truly believers in creating and finding affordable housing, you know, 1,000 and 1,200 are two different, you know, it's two different elements here, right? And where the homeowner or the developer, whomever, is going to charge a lot more and it's not going to be affordable for certain individuals. So, that's where I'm at. Again, I would love to have 1,200, but I'm, I'm thinking about affordability.
Yes.
But, but it says up to 1,200, right?
Right.
So, I look at the developer too, in making a project work. We're having a struggle with ADUs.
But this is ADUs, yeah.
I know, I know, but we're having a struggle in getting ADUs produced. So, if we're putting a restriction too on the size of it, a developer may be looking for the 1,200. I don't know, it's attractive to them.
Okay, well, oh, Councilmember Bracco.
On the ADUs, I, I really don't care either way. But something to think about, you know, 1,200 square foot ADU is going to cost over half a million dollars to build. So, you know, there, I don't think there's a whole big market in, out there for them. And I also want to remind everyone, you know, originally it was 600 square feet.
Yes.
And as soon as we adopted that, then everybody wanted 800.
Yep.
We adopted that, then 1,000. And it's just going to keep going.
Yes.
You know, if we adopt 1,200 tonight, within a few months, somebody's going to want us to go to 1,400.
That the state doesn't allow it right now?
Yeah.
That's, okay.
No, they allow it. You're allowed to go, you're allowed to go as high as you want.
Shall not exceed 1,200 square feet.
You can go, you can go over that if you want to go over that.
Okay. Okay, so we have, okay, we have a motion. I think, I think we've had a lot of discussion. I think we have a motion in a second. It's probably time to vote unless somebody from staff or our consultant wants to tell us that we're doing something that is going to be a serious detriment to this housing element.
So, just, I want to be clear on what I've heard. So, we are going to remove Program A10 regarding missing middle housing. We are going to delete the.
Wait, removing A10, is that what?
A10.
Alpha 10.
Okay.
For Program A15, Alpha 15, we're going to eliminate the reference to increasing the square footage for ADUs to 1,200 square feet. And we're going to, under Program B, Boy 5, we're going to remove the reference to the plan development change.
And you're missing the date of May 1st for existing lots, wait.
Well, if we eliminate missing middle, it's a moot point.
Okay. Oh, so we're not just going, we're not, I thought we said that we would let that apply to 8,000 square foot lots, just not 6,000.
Is, is that what?
Isn't that what we said? The pink was okay, just not the blue.
Yeah, I, okay, I will, I will agree, you know, to go up to 8,000. I'm not happy with it, but I will, I just think it's just too much. It's, we have the same car problem, the whole bit.
But, but it's a compromise. We're trying to, that's what I thought we had said.
Yeah, I will make a concession.
I think that's the motion on the table.
Yeah. Councilmember Tovar, is that not what?
And then Cindy, I know you're reading off the numbers. I don't have the numbers in front of me. Did you take the planning commission out of that?
Yes, she said that.
That was, you just said, okay.
So, do we need to try this again? Do you want to put, or is that clear now? Because it's not removing the whole missing middle.
So, under Program A10, the missing middle program, we would change it so that the program only applies to those approximately 429 corner lots on 8,000 square foot lots in the Arwin District.
And?
And we would apply the program only to lots that were existing or subdivided before today.
Correct. Right, that, so we're not eliminating that. We're just changing, we're making those two changes to it. Okay. And then, the planning commission thing is gone?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the ADU to 1,000 is gone? Is, is now? And those were the only things, right? Okay. Ready for a vote?
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
No.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes. Okay, and that's five to one and one absent. Okay, let's take a break. How about we come back at, is 8:30 too long?
Madam Mayor, may I ask a quick question? City Attorney, favor. Did we adopt, I mean, adopt the housing, amend the housing element, but did we not approve the resolution or, or approve the motion to, for the community director to?
Is there one more thing here?
What are you saying?
He's saying, do we do this? Do we do this and this? We already did this.
Oh, we, no, he's correct. We need to, there's a third motion to allow them to make changes.
Okay, sorry. I hope, good, everybody's still here. Okay, so I still need a motion to direct the community development director or designate to submit the 2023-2031 housing element and all associated documentation to HCD and further authorize the community development director or designate to make any changes to the element necessary to make it internally consistent, conformed to state housing element law as provided?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think that we would interpret that to mean that they could not, that staff cannot by itself change these three elements that were voted on specifically.
Four, I think there were four elements. Okay.
All right, so moved.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Marks. I'll second it, okay.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes, okay, and that one passed unanimously, minus one absent. Okay, now are we good to break?
Yes, Madam.
Is 8:30 okay? Or is that too long?
Yes.
Okay, breaking to 8:30. Okay, we're all back. 9.3 is introduction and first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gilroy amending Sections 10A, Point 15A, and C of the Gilroy City Code relating to host liability for illegal fireworks and illegal use of legal fireworks. I'm hearing talking. Thank you. Okay, Jonathan, go ahead.
Good evening, thank you for the introduction. So, a little recap, from February 27th, we recycled this slide here. Just to remember why we are here talking about illegal fireworks. And the photo on the left is a real, actual fire in Gilroy. The hand injury is kind of a toned-down version of what some of the firefighters have told me about injuries, where people have lost limbs and so on. I received telephone calls from people regarding the, their brother has PTSD and they cannot function due to the fireworks. And then, of course, we have our pets. People call about the pets. Can you do something about the fireworks? And so, based on the direction from council and the feedback we received from the hearing officer, we proceeded to add some language to the ordinance. You know, our statistics on the appeals was not real good in any of the years. You know, 2020, if you appealed, you had a 90% chance of winning. I'm just showing the statistics in the reverse sense. 90% chance you're going to win. So, we quadrupled it in 2022 by improving some of the language and also with video evidence and having officers present during the hearings. And, yeah, that, that improved it, but it's still almost a coin flip as to whether that fireworks citation would hold or not. So, the ordinance is actually, there's really not a whole lot different. We're adding just very few words to it, and I think you'll see it on the next slide. And it just continues with the theme of host liability, which is what many other cities along with Gilroy are looking to do to address the growing problem of illegal fireworks in California. The red highlighted language shows the actual words that have been added, and these are based on the recommendations from the hearing officer. So, something as simple as allows. Item number four is, is the longest sentence. Possession. And also, we have the public street adjacent to the property to tighten up the language in the ordinance. Count it up, it's 57 words that are being added. So, I'm going through this fairly quickly. Alternatives, you can take a look at the language that we have proposed based on the recommendations from the hearing officer. And consider it. Or reject it. And we recommend to adopt these language changes, which are relatively minor, to prevent appellants from wiggling out of the appeal process. There's really no effect on funding. And we are doing community outreach. Currently, we have it planned for 2023. And if you accept these amendments, the ordinance would go into effect in 30 days. Let's see here. So, basically, this is an introduction for your consideration. And then we will go to, actually, I'm going to go straight to any questions. Questions, comments, concerns that you might have?
So, did you say that community outreach has not yet happened?
Well, we've done a little bit. I'll take that back. I think that we have had some stuff go out in the email express. You may remember.
No, I do. I was just wondering if that's, if I heard you correctly and what, okay?
Well, it's, 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 it's beginning phases.
Okay, so tonight is to, would more be done after tonight?
More.
Community outreach?
Yes, yeah. Rochelle has a plan.
But isn't this scheduled to come back at the next council meeting? Right, so maybe just explain that for us?
Yes.
Yes, if council does move forward with this, you know, introduction tonight in the first reading, then staff will return with the second reading. And then the ordinance will become effective 30 days from that.
Okay, so how is the community outreach part of it? Yes?
So, we've been working with Rochelle on our marketing plan that takes us through the July 4th celebration. And what that plan entails is doing a utility billing mailing, an advertisement that's in there that talks about 4th of July, how to be prepared, talks about the, the plan that's in place already with the ordinance that's been passed, the code that exists. After May 15th is when she would add language that includes this amendment, but that's not in the plan yet. She's just in the preliminary stages of preparing those materials. And that's what Jonathan was alluding to. We're also doing a postcard mailing to the Wui area, the wild land.
Urban interface.
Okay, okay.
And that's weed abatement and fire. So, he's talking about that whole plan as part of our marketing outreach.
Outreach as, not outreach as in soliciting opinions. Outreach as in informing people of the rules.
Exactly.
Got it?
Correct.
Okay.
Before you leave, sorry, just staying on that, Mayor, sorry. This outreach plan that's currently in place, will it, will it also be in Spanish with multiple languages?
Yes, the utility billing is bilingual.
Right.
The postcard, I believe, is English only. And that's what we sent last time. But it's only sent, not to send all of Gilroy. It's only sent to the area on the hillside, on the west side of Gilroy. It's sent to that area. And then, all of our newsletters that go out, those are bilingual. And then she'll do her Facebook posts and social media, which all of those are bilingual as well.
Are they? Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Marks?
Okay, I have one question, just to clarify. How are you going to know that it's the property owner who's responsible for the illegal fireworks? Okay, I'll give you an example. Okay, for someone who lives over by the high school, a lot of people will go to watch the fireworks and they will set off fireworks, sometimes illegals, in front of, in front of someone's house where they parked. So, I want to, I want to make sure that the correct people are being fined if I approve this and not just, you know, we guess, oh, well, you know, you're in front of your house, so we're going to nail you for it.
So, these are typically based on multiple officer observations.
Okay.
So, they've watched a person go out to the street, set up the tube, also called the mortar.
Okay.
Light the firework, return to the property residence.
Okay.
Then pick up the mortar again. So, they've, they've watched going back and forth, going onto the lawn and so on.
Okay.
So, these are, these are, you know, officer observations. And they also back it up with video evidence as well.
Great, all right, thank you. I've got Councilmember Klein first and then Councilmember Bracco.
Quick question. You said in '20, it was lower, but you improved as far as being able to, it sticks more in '22?
Yeah, yeah.
And what was the change? Maybe I missed it, but what was different between the two?
Language was added to improve the host liability, or some people refer to it as social host, social host ordinance. That was part of it. Video, they use drones and body cameras. And also, the officers were present to provide their testimony and clarify any questions the hearing officer might have had. questions the hearing officer might have had. So, I mean, I couldn't say exactly what it is, but they're all, again, sort of like these pieces that we're putting together to try to improve.
With this additional language, the hope is to, in a sense, put the fear in people not to do it. Otherwise, it gives you the ability, or is better teeth, right, to the whole process of being able to get the citations to stick.
Right. It's, it's so that a person couldn't, like I say, I use the word wiggle out on a technicality, where some association between lighting the fireworks in the street and then returning to the property, there, something about a particular case where there were, there wasn't a legal connection sufficient for the hearing officer to render a guilty decision. So, this, these minor changes in language improve that, hopefully.
All right, thanks.
All right, Councilmember Bracco.
So, if the officer's observing the person lighting the fireworks, why doesn't the officer give that person the citation instead of sending it to the landlord?
It's a good question. So, I've seen some of the videos, body cameras, and one of them I can remember. I see the officers, two, two officers, it looks like, are approaching. There's a group of about 20 people, and the leader of the group is intoxicated. And you can hear sort of heckling in the background, and the officers are doing what they can to de-escalate and, and talk to these people. But it's, it's a sketchy situation. If you're out there, and, and you're surrounded by 20 people who may not like badges, it's, it's a safety situation. And, yeah, I mean, I agree with you. If they could give the citation directly to the person in the moment, that's the best. But we have to consider safety, and we don't want to escalate the situation over some fireworks. Some of the fireworks, though, are really dangerous. I mean, we've seen ones that are just, they're not, things are just getting bigger, you know? It's not firecrackers. It's, it's not M80s. It's M100s, M1000s. There's just, there's just not enough. Just like, just like some other things we were talking about earlier tonight, there's this sort of incremental increase. And so, we have to do what we can to address that as safely as possible, and considering the safety of the officers, too.
So, you're saying the same officers that go to domestic disputes, fights, and everything else are afraid of the citizens of Gilroy on 4th of July?
I'm saying, well, actually, it's not what I'm saying, but I took some notes at the League, the June 2021 League of California Cities Virtual Roundtable Discussion on Fireworks. Let's see. These are comments from various city officials, police chiefs, mayors, and so on. They want more police and unmarked cars. Catching them in the act is the most difficult part of illegal fireworks enforcement. This jurisdiction's using drones. Illegal fireworks situation is getting worse. The users are not even trying to hide the use of illegal fireworks. It's hard to find the culprits and pinpoint who is the responsible person. Often, they will have people in groups of 20, and no one will say who lit off the illegal fireworks. This, this is why, why RICA. They also mentioned that they have adopted a social host ordinance.
Councilmember Bracco, I could give you a perspective on that as well. We're trying to keep this at administrative level. We do not want to enter into the law enforcement level and have conflict and potential situations where we're dealing with intoxicated individuals. As you saw the numbers before, 40% of the citations we gave were verified. They were legitimate, and they were paid. And so, if we could get that number to go up by continuing to educate and continue to cite when we can, and if there is an instance where somebody was cited and they shouldn't have been, we would much rather go through an administrative hearing where they have their rights, they can make their case, and sometimes we get it wrong, as opposed to, you know, really getting into a situation where we're confronting residents and escalating over, like Jonathan said, fireworks. So, I don't think they're scared of anybody. I just think they're being smart, and I would not want a fireworks citation to escalate into something much more.
Okay, let's go to public comment on this item. Oh, no, this is a public hearing as well. Yep, 8:45. Any public comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Closing public hearing at 8:45. I have one question, and it's, I don't think it's going to go anywhere because it's really not about the social host, but if we were to mount cameras, because this is a problem, not just on the 4th of July, if there were certain hotspots, or you just choose, you chose, I don't know, 10 places where you're going to mount cameras, I realize the time, the expense involved isn't in the cameras so much as in who's going to watch all that footage, you know, 24/7, every single day. If you had a volunteer willing to do that, might that help? Or you can't do it, you just can't do that?
I think there's a few reasons why we would not want to do that. Is, is, one, a volunteer doesn't have the, the same training, you know, the legal, the legal authority to make accusations against others.
No, 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 just to watch the video and then call someone who does to say, look, here it is. It's at 8:53 on January 4th.
Well, we do have a hotline.
Okay.
We do have a number that people call. We do get complaints, and we, we, we do address those. But what Jonathan's talking about, we tend to get the person who keeps doing it over and over on a nightly basis, who everybody knows is blowing things up in front of the houses. So, you know, somebody out there throwing a firecracker every once in a while is probably not the person we're going to get. We're looking for the really dangerous people who use the M1000s and things like that. So, I would not suggest that be a solution. I think we made some progress last year by the number of citations, and I think it was a little bit quieter. The calls were less. Doesn't mean it was perfect. It was great, but we're interested to see how, every year it's improved, the more we've done, and I think we're on the right track.
Okay, then, does anyone want to make a motion? The motion would be to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading.
Some move.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Tovar. Is there a second? There's not a second. Oh, seconded by Councilmember Klein. Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Bracco?
No.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marx?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, okay. It passes five to one, one absent, and now go ahead and read it.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gilroy amending Sections 10A.15A and C to the Gilroy City Code relating to host liability for illegal fireworks and illegal use of legal fireworks.
All right, now we need a motion to introduce the ordinance. Moved by Councilmember Tovar. I'm going to say seconded by Councilmember Klein. Yes? Okay. And that's a roll call vote?
Councilmember Bracco?
No.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marx?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar? And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, that also passed five to one with one absent. All right, that brings us to 9.4. Conduct a public hearing to approve CDBG program, year 2023 and 2024, funding allocations, and annual action plan. Sharon, go ahead.
Good evening again, Mayor, council members, and members of the community. So, tonight we have next year's CDBG allocation and annual action plan. And just for some background, CDBG is administered by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, of the federal government. And all CDBG-funded activities must meet a national objective. The city of Gilroy has been using CDBG to benefit low and moderate income persons. In order to encourage applicants to apply for CDBG funding, the city of Gilroy administers a two-year funding cycle. In 2021, the city released a notice of funding availability for those two years. So, the first program year is from July last year through June this year, and then the next program year, the second year of that two-year funding cycle, starts, you know, this next July, going to June 2024. HUD announced the funding allocation for the city of Gilroy, and that was $368,433. And this is a little bit lower than last year, as due to no fault of the city. Each year, HUD determines the amount of each entitlement grantee's annual funding allocation, and there are many variables that go into that. First is the federal level of CDBG appropriations, and that can vary. And there are also variations in the demographic data across states and communities, so all of that contribute to the amounts varying each year. In addition to this annual allocation, staff has identified $280,460 of unused prior year's resources. And this is the remaining balance from projects and programs since 2016. And since fall of last year, staff has been spending significant efforts assessing all prior year's activities to ensure that we don't lose CDBG funding. So, we kind of did like an audit ourselves. And part of that was just, you know, me coming on board and learning about the CDBG programs here, and making sure, you know, we spend all the money we have and don't risk losing any funding. So, through these efforts, that's how we identify prior year's resources totaling this amount. And we noted this as a critical, you know, funding to ensure that we meet our expenditure obligation with HUD. So, we're proposing to be this, this amount in addition to the annual allocation, to be allocated in this next year's annual action plan. Oh, sure, sure.
And we have this fan thing going, too, so it's a little bit of a challenge.
Okay, sounds, is this better?
Yes.
Closer, okay. So, just to expand a little bit more on the annual allocation, as you saw, the number is $368,433. And HUD has some rules about that. So, the public services, it has a cap of 15%. So, that gives us this total of just a little over $55,000. And also sets a percentage cap on the program administration. That's all the, you know, staff time to administer the program. And that 20% comes, comes out to a little over $73,000. And because the city administers a two-year funding cycle, the funding renewal for the second year is based on satisfactory performance during the first year. In the staff report, we can provide the performance results for those programs we funded the first year. And the programs and projects we're proposing for funding renewal, they do represent those that got the grant the first year, and they're also performing satisfactorily, and they're on track to meet their program goals. There was one exception this year, and that's the Boys and Girls Club of Silicon Valley. They have the Ochoa Clubhouse Core Enrichment Program. We understood from them that their program isn't going to provide services in this next program year, and we've been communicating with them, asking if they have a similar program. And they don't have any program really defined yet, and they haven't confirmed to launch that until the summer. So, we've let them know that, you know, staff is not going to be able to recommend their program getting funding. However, this next bullet point can explains that the funding that would have gone to Boys and Girls Club in the second year, we have distributed that proportionally among the other three, based on their percentage of public services. So, you'll see the numbers on the next two slides, but those are the three other programs that we funded during the first year.
Sorry, in, in, in layman's terms from, from me here, so when you, you say those three additional, so the funding that from the Ochoa that we're not going to, I mean, we're not funding, so that, whatever their, their amount was.
Got divided, 7,000, got divided among the other three.
The other three, right?
Yes, correct.
When you looked at the other, maybe it's the next slide, but I'm looking at the other three, and what I'm seeing here is, so for example, Live Oak is, sorry, I'm going back and forth here. The number of folks that they're, it says 13 and then 25, right? That's their annual goal. It says service 25 individuals, right? Is that how I'm reading it correctly?
Uh, yes, so.
And then you looked at, got us here, it says, they're only serving five individuals, right?
Through half of the year. So, we have the performance measures through the second quarter.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, because I'm looking at the funding, and then I'm looking at correlating that to the number of individuals that they're serving, right? So, if you compare just those two, where you have Live Oak serving a bit more, and it's getting a little bit more money than, say, the other group who's serving less, I don't know how that's equally divided. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I would go off based on the number of individuals that they're serving.
Yeah, but part of it, too, is that because this is the second year of the program funding, so we're doing it, you know, the start, the process started with us doing it all proportionally to the first year.
Okay.
And then we looked at, you know, because they all have performed satisfactorily, based on the numbers you just cited, and then we allocated that proportionally for the second year. And then when we found out that Boys and Girls Club actually don't have, you know, won't be running that program, then we took, zeroed out that amount, and then distributed that based on kind of the weight, you know, the percentage among the other three.
Okay.
And that's how the second year's funding proposal is derived.
Okay, I'll wait. Okay, I have some more questions. Bye, wait. Thank you.
Okay, so, as I mentioned, staff has identified unused prior year's resources totaling over $280,000. And this is, you know, just kind of repeating that reconciliation of previous year's projects versus the actual. So, it was the allocated amount versus what the actual project, you know, results were. And those funds remain in the city's line of credit with HUD, and they should be utilized for another eligible activity. And this process just ensures that the city retains all the unused funds in order to use them for future allocations. And this is, you know, quite typical, because we accumulate prior year's unused allocations, and then we want to fund those for future projects and programs. And so, I kind of mentioned this earlier, too, to obligate all current funds and not to jeopardize the allocation of future funds from HUD. Staff recommends that we, you know, take that balance and include them in this next year's annual allocation. This also will help alleviate that funding reduction, you know, the slightly lower amount that we got this year, and also allow any gap to be funded, using the resources from prior year. So, in accordance with HUD regulations, the prior year's resources, you use that to do capital projects because there is no cap in that category. And this amount can allow us to fund areas of larger communities. And these are the areas that usually, you know, take larger amounts, such as affordable rehabilitation or preservation, and a safe pedestrian pathway creation. So, for the past several months, staff has been working with Rebuilding Together Silicon Valley to determine there's a need for additional funding for this program. And earlier this year, you might recall that we did a workshop together with Rebuilding Together at the senior center, and that was really successful, because even at the end of the workshop, we had nine low-income seniors that already turning the applications, and there were more attendees that took their applications home, so they can, you know, look into any more details and check with their families on those, on the possible repairs and improvements, you know, safety repairs and accessibility improvements for their homes. And so, there's also been, you know, increased costs in construction. So, that coupled with the increased number of applications we've been seeing as a result of that outreach, and also to provide the ability to assist all the residents with larger needs, because some of them have larger repairs or numerous repairs. And this additional funding from the prior year's resource can help achieve that. Staff is recommending adding some of the prior year's funding to this program. And then, for our public works partners, they'll be designing and constructing another pedestrian, you know, project, which is involving sidewalks and curb ramps. And the current amount from the annual allocation, you know, is a pretty small amount for a project like this. That's why staff also recommends adding prior year's resources to the sidewalk and curb ramp project. So, this is the same table you have in the staff report. So, the first line is just letting you know that's that 15% cap that I was talking about, calculated based on the annual allocation, the $55,264. And the three below, that's what I was talking about, how, you know, they got allocated. First, according to prior year's amounts, and then when Boys and Girls Club, we learned that they were not going to have the program. That number got distributed to these three. So, that's how those numbers came about, the 37,000, you know, 9,782. And then, Rebuilding Together Silicon Valley, in past years, the city has And then Rebuilding Together Silicon Valley, in past years, the city has been funding a hundred forty thousand dollars per year. So that's what we kept. And then if I can jump to the bottom, the program administration can be up to twenty percent. So that's what we have done. And then really, it's based on the math, how the ninety-nine thousand dollars is the amount for the sidewalk and curb ramps. So that's the third column from the right. And then the second column from the right, that's the prior year's resources I was talking about, the, you know, two hundred eighty thousand that we're, that we have identified. And this is based on all the discussions with both Rebuilding Together and Public Works that we derived that these amounts, you know, to be the best, you know, for their programs. And then the last column, the column to the right, that's the total from those two columns. So that's what staff has proposed for the allocation. And these are the proposed projects and programs for program year twenty-three, twenty-four. And then staff recommendations to approve these funding allocations and the annual action plan for program year twenty-three, twenty-four. Thank you so much.
Okay. Questions, council? Okay. Public comment? Wait, public hearing? Public hearing, nine oh two.
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Closing at nine oh two. Okay, back to council. Nobody has a question? In the interest of time, I'm not going to ask. Since I have questions, but they're not that important. Okay. Then we need a motion to approve these funding allocations.
So move.
Okay. Made by Councilwoman Tovar, seconded by Councilmember Marks. Roll call, digital. Okay, is that all of us? All right, pass. Thank you, Sharon. Okay. Moving on to ten point one. Adopt a resolution forming the downtown committee and appoint public members to the committee. Bryce will give us this report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a follow-up item to the discussion that council had on the proposed resolution to form the committee back on April seventeenth. At that meeting, council provided directions to staff for amendments to that resolution. Those amendments have been made and are presented to you tonight, this evening, for adoption. Just to briefly recap on the core tenants of the resolution, some of the amendments include providing a description of the downtown area, which is Eagleberry and Railroad Streets from First to Tenth Street as the downtown area. The committee structure is to comply with and be governed by the Brown Act, consists of five appointed council members. Each were authorized to appoint two public members. The public members must be residents, business owners, or property owners from downtown Gilroy. Council also recommended the resolution to recognize Councilmember Marks as the chair and Councilmember Tovar as the vice chair. The committee structure continued eight members form a quorum with a simple majority passing a motion, but must have at least three council members agree on the vote. The council adopted boards and commissions. Attendance policy shall apply to the public members, but council members control the seats they appoint and may reappoint the seats they control if vacated. The committee members perform the work and cannot direct staff, but may make recommendations to the council to issue direction to staff if the full council supports the recommendation. Staff will handle agenda preparation and posting, meeting attendance, and minutes preparation. The term of the committee shall be twenty-four months, ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. That meeting is scheduled for the second Tuesday of the month at eight AM on the floor of the city council chambers, with the first meeting being this, come this next Tuesday on May ninth. Meetings will commence monthly at first, but may be less frequent to once every two months or quarterly at the determination of the committee. Scope and powers of the duties of the committee, the first meeting is to reassign priority of remaining recommendations and define progress and work plan for those items. They may pursue additional recommendations or work, with reporting back being done at the determination of the committee or council, but no less than annually. With that, staff is recommending adoption of the resolution forming the downtown committee and also further recommends appointment of the public members to the committee. That completes the presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Bryce. So council, at first we would, item A is to adopt a resolution forming the committee, and then B would be to appoint the members. So Andy, do you suggest we take them separately?
Yes.
Okay. So let's.
Yes, I do.
Okay. So let's have discussion on A, if there is any discussion, or is there a motion for A?
Madam Mayor?
Wait, a public comment?
Yes, Madam.
Yes. Okay. Well, first, is there any discussion on A? Okay, do we have public, is this a public hearing too? No, public comment.
Public comment.
Anybody?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment. Okay, so back to council. Okay, motion by Councilmember Bracco. Oh, okay, seconded by Councilmember Klein to adopt the resolution forming the downtown committee.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blinkley.
Yes. All right, that's unanimous with one absent. Okay, next is to appoint public members to the committee. So we have one member absent, Councilmember Armandares, but I understand that she has communicated to Councilmember Marks who her nominees are. And those are Lorena Galletta of Galletta's Market? Is it?
I think restaurant.
Restaurant, Galletta's Restaurant. And Matt, does he pronounce it Galleon?
I think so.
Okay, from Pormy Tap Room. Okay. Councilmember Bracco, who would be yours?
I, Jeff Orth. And I had been a Franklin, but I was told she can't be on there, or I don't know why, but.
Yes, you do. We talked about this.
Well, no, I don't think it's right.
Okay. Okay, so Jeff Orth.
Well, she can't be on there because she doesn't own Pendleton Bank. She's management there. And she doesn't own the building, because she's the shareholder there. But yet Victoria from the Chamber can be on, but she doesn't own the building, she doesn't own the business. So it just bothers me. And my other person is Carol.
You told me Dave Caldwell.
Dave Caldwell, proud.
Dick Caldwell's comic book place.
Okay, does there?
Well, Mayor, I'm sorry, I kind of have to defend, and I appreciate Councilmember Bracco's response because something very similar happened to me, but I understand that. But when we talked about Victoria, who's the CEO of the Chamber, which is located downtown, she oversees it. I mean, basically, it's their building. So that's where, for me, that sort of contradicts your comments because she's there, she oversees that building, so that is the Chamber building, right?
Right.
No, 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 I know. But no, no, but you mentioned her name, I just, out of respect, I wanted to defend her because, yeah, so I just want to make sure.
If someone, I mean, we have our city attorney here too, so we may need to make, well, we need to make sure that we are doing what's in accordance with our thing. I mean, my understanding of the criteria is if someone is running the business, they didn't have to own the business, but if they are, if they are the one in charge, they, the owner could be out of town. And this is the person that day to day is the, is the head person of the business, day to day, then that's someone who's running a business downtown.
Right. And that's how.
And that's how, that's why someone like Victoria.
Right.
Would qualify, as I understand what we just did.
Right.
So if there is something to be said.
Well, with all due respect, the resolution that you just adopted.
Okay.
Says, says members of their choice from the residential community, business owners or property owners. You could change the resolution and say business managers, for example, if you wanted to, but it doesn't say that now.
Okay. So, so the way it says, what we just passed, then Victoria could not, she doesn't own the Chamber.
No. No, that's, that's incorrect. Because again, you know.
Okay, what do we intend, guys?
I mean, someone who runs day to day, who's there, who own, they own that building. So to me, that is, she's, I mean, she, they run that building, that's their building downtown.
That's true. She's got, it's the property.
Right. Then again, yeah.
Okay.
Move forward and see how it goes.
Okay. All right. So then your choices are Jeff, who has a, he's not only president GDBA, but he's got a business on Eagleberry. Okay, and who was the other person?
Dave Caldwell.
Dave Caldwell. Okay. And he owns.
Caldwell's Comic Books.
Oh, Caldwell Comic Books, okay. And Councilmember Marks, your choices?
Jeanne Rizzuto.
Mm-hmm.
She owns her father's building right next to Fifth Street Coffee. And Fran Bodett, who is the owner of Old City Hall.
Right, the owner of the business. Mm-hmm. Okay. Councilmember Tovar?
So originally, I had Frank Johnson, which, you know, I was told, again, and just sort of going along. So I apologize, Frank. But my two now, obviously, are Victoria from the, from the Chamber, and then William Liao, who owns the business downtown, the bookstore, I believe, downtown, so.
William?
Liao.
Owns a bookstore downtown. Okay, and mine are Dave Liao and Emily McEwen-Upright.
Who are?
Sorry, Emily. Emily owns Gallery twelve oh two and Sixth Street Studios.
Maybe I bring this up if I can. So these are our choices. If, again, I know Carol and I have been in constant communication, but if for some reason, and I don't know if this has been discussed, but if for some reason, you know, the members that we've chosen can't commit for some other reason after we start, how do we go about selecting new folks?
Have you spoken to the people that you just suggested?
No, 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 I'm not talking about mine, I'm just saying in general.
Oh.
You know, if.
And you're responsible for your two people, if that don't work out, you'd get two people.
Yeah, no, no, and I asked that question because at that point, can we say, well, if there aren't any more building business owners or residents, can we look outside and say community?
We'd have to change the first motion.
If we go through all the business owners, we're in trouble.
No, no, but I'm saying that a lot of folks that I've reached out to, business owners, building owners, they, unfortunately, they don't have the time or the commitment.
They're not interested, yeah.
Right. I'm just saying, there's a little.
But I agree. I think we really need to make contact with the rest of the building owners. And we'll, we'll have that discussion when, if that happens.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to bring that, yeah.
Because we all, we all hit, you know, against barriers, you know, nothing against any of the people that, you know, Fred and Dion appointed. I even lost one of my people. But we had it, all of you approved it, you know, that night, and so we have to stick by what was approved. And sorry about that.
Okay. So we have the names, so, and hopefully, everybody has discussed it with those people that you named, so that you know they're willing. And so then that leaves us with needing a motion to appoint these, nope.
I actually don't think you have to do that.
Oh.
Because the way the resolution works is the individual council members get to appoint their people. They're not really, as I interpret it, not subject to council approval.
Okay. So we don't need public comment, nothing?
So I think you're actually done, yes.
Okay. We're actually done.
Yes.
There it is. Okay. Introduction of New Business, eleven point one. Fiscal year 2023 general fund forecast update. Way to go hard joke, get us when we're tired. Okay.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the community, Hr Jia Song at the finance director. I'll be presenting the item before you, which is the fiscal year 23 general fund update and also a, giving you an update on the budget development process to date. A little background, our current biennial budget was adopted on June seventh, 2021, which is for fiscal year 22 and 23. We're just about to wrap up the second year of that biennial budget. The process started back in January with the council holding a strategic planning workshop and then a, followed by a March workshop where council evaluated the goals and priorities, as well as reviewing the proposed work plans. For fiscal year 23, the general fund budgeted revenues are sixty-three point six million. And we're projecting the, the general fund to end with about sixty-three point eight, which is about, just around budget. Notable items here are going to be sales tax. You'll note that the sales tax revenue is projected to come under budget. This is largely with the most recent update that we received regarding the sales tax forecast and the areas or segments that are particularly impacted with a reduction or transportation, which includes our auto sales, our general retail, as well as the construction. The utility user's tax is the opposite. We are projected to come in about eight hundred thousand dollars better than budget, and that's primarily due to the energy segments of electricity as well as gas, as we have seen in our personal lives, I'm sure, you know, those, those utilities are getting more expensive, therefore, the assessment is generating additional tax revenue. Similarly, for the franchise tax as well, we're projecting to come in about four hundred thousand dollars better than budget, again, primarily in the gas and the electric franchises, as well as council recently approved a new refuse agreement with Recology, which had rate adjustments, so that went into effect, so we're projecting those to also follow through. So that concludes my revenue forecast update. Up next, I have is the general fund expenditures. The total budgeted general fund expenditures are sixty-four point eight million. We're projected to end the fiscal year 23 with sixty-three point six million dollars, so just about one point two million dollars under budget, primarily related to savings from vacancies and salary savings. The, there are a couple areas that probably jump out at you. It's central services and the other general government. Those are cost centers that basically account for the internal services costs, such as costs to operate our facilities, as well as general liability claims. So those are areas we are seeing, much like we're seeing our, you know, utility user tax impacted. It's coming out of the, you know, the pandemic, we're seeing it's operating, our operating costs to and maintain our facilities has gone up as well. So that, those areas are where you'll see those. But overall, we are projected to the, end the year about one point two million dollars under budget on the expense side. As far as the fund balance goes, we're projected to end the fiscal year 23 with a fund balance of thirty-four point six million, which equates to about fifty-four percent. In context of comparing it to our minimum required fund balance, we're required to have a thirty percent, so we have some healthy fund, fund balance reserves. So as part of the recommended budget for fiscal year 24 and 25, council can certainly expect some strategic one-time investments to be made utilizing some of those fund balances. Update on the budget development. Again, as I mentioned, the process commenced back in January, where the council held its strategic planning workshop. Council reviewed and validated existing work plans, council-initiated items, as well as considered addition, additional new legislative agenda items as well. Fast forward to March, council met again for the goal priority setting workshop, where council affirmed the recommended departmental work plan items, as well as the council-initiated items and any new legislative agenda items as well. Since then, departments have kind of gone back, prepared their budgets that align with those work plans that were introduced to you back in, back in March. On the general fund front, from a revenues perspective, largely our tax-based revenue projections are expected to remain the same. We are projecting a slower growth, as we have kind of communicated in the past, especially notably in our sales tax, as is evident in our fiscal year 23 year-end projections. From the expenditures side, a significant notable item to mention here is the council since March has taken action to approve an extension to the Gilroy Police Officers Association MOU. So, you know, with that, council now successfully has multi-year contracts with all of our bargaining units that will run through this biennial budget process. So what that does is also helps us kind of project out the costs that we can expect over the next two years. So, so I think that provides us, and, and as well as our teammates, stability on, on what to expect. So you'll definitely see all the MOU changes reflected from a personnel perspective, and then outside of that, just you'll notice, note increased materials and services, as well as internal service charges, such as facilities, general liability, and that's primarily the function of a, you know, the inflation, as well as the increased costs to operate and maintain our facilities as, as we move forward. Back in March, we also discussed with council the approach that we will be kind of taking to the budget development for the next biennial, biennial budget, and the concept of one-time revenues should be aligned with one-time expenditures, and any ongoing revenues would be aligned with any kind of increased ongoing expenditures. We previewed some of the items with you, which included infrastructure. So those one-time needs include infrastructure, our pavement, our streets, investments into the park, restaurants, fire stations, as well as our agent fleet, from an equipment and supplies. From an equipment and supplies perspective, there's a need for public safety equipment that's outdated, that we, is due for replacement and upgrade. And then on the planning front, we have discussed with the council, the need to do a civic center master plan, a downtown specific plan, and other, you know, work line items, including the climate action, the VMT policy, as well as planning around our youth center. And last but not least, from a liability perspective, you know, there's always the topic of pension and other post-employment benefits, workers' compensation and general liabilities are those areas that we're keeping an eye on and addressing those. So council can certainly expect, as part of the recommended budget, much of these items will be reflected as those one-time needs, one-time strategic, one-time investments. From a positions perspective, there's definitely a need for additional personnel to maintain current service levels, and especially in the area of our public safety, as well as our utilities' functions. So from a general fund perspective, where much of our public safety is funded out of, we'll be looking at making any kind of recommendations that align with the educational revenue augmentation fund, which is the ERAF fund that we shared with you back in March. We received notification from the county that we will get an allocation for fiscal year 24. So what we're evaluating now is, you know, the school, California School Boards Association had originally filed a, basically, a writ of mandate, which was denied by the court. They have since filed an appeal in January, and the outcome is yet to be determined. So if we find, again, the second time around, if appeal is denied, and it's in the favor of the cities and the counties, we can expect this to become a ongoing revenue source that we can start putting it into our budget, as well as aligning some of these position recommendations that we'll be making contingent upon that. So council can certainly expect that. For the non-general fund side of things, such as water and wastewater utilities, we'll be making some recommendations just based on operational needs, and as well as the need for delivering of the capital improvement program. As you recall, last month, you approved a water, wastewater and storm drain master plan, so, which yielded, and a lot of capital needs that are needed in our utilities front, so we'll be looking to formulate a plan to kind of address that as well. So that's kind of, in a nutshell, the update to the budget development process to date. As far as our next steps go, we have a council CIP workshop, which is this Wednesday, and we're looking to, just under two weeks, put out the recommended 2425 budget, which will be available, and then on May 22nd, the council is scheduled to conduct a budget workshop on May 22nd. And then two days later, we're looking to also host a community budget meeting, we'll invite the public to go ahead and ask the departments questions, departments will have an opportunity to present before the community as well. So all that will get packaged up, all the feedback, and we'll come back to you on June 5th with any kind of feedback that we have solicited, as well as a recommendation to adopt the operating and the CIP budgets at that time. So that's kind of the process to, to date, and what we're looking to do over the next month. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak?
No speaker cards, madam mayor.
Okay, closing public comment, it's received report. Thank you. Okay, moving on to eleven point two, which is council consideration of a city council proclamation and recognition policy, long overdue, but we finally got here. Okay, Bryce?
Yes, good evening, council. So a little bit of background, the city receives regularly requests for proclamations and recognitions, but as mentioned, we have no policy addressing how those are to be handled, so the draft policy has been created to establish consistent handling of requests. In creating it, we have looked at benchmarking its other cities to incorporate their general practices into this draft policy before you. So some key policy points, this is true of all requests, we are going to require, as part of the policy, if approved, submission of a request, a statement that does not guarantee the issuance of a proclamation. Only one proclamation may be issued per event, but multiple proclamations may be issued for the same day, week, month, or year, as I saw earlier on this agenda. The subject must be relevant to the city of Gilroy Community, and the person or group requesting the proclamation or recognition, or the person being recognized, must be a member of the community as well.
Bryce, clarification?
Sure.
The subject must be relevant to the Gilroy community.
Correct.
Can you elaborate on that for me?
So if, let's say you get approached by somebody wanting to do something statewide for, you know, I'm trying to think of something that would be applied, you know, horse tracks, it's not really something that the city of Gilroy has and doesn't pertain to us, so that would be something that we wouldn't necessarily do a proclamation for.
And I forget to think of-
It's a bit subjective, I mean, obviously, subject to council's direction, but-
But I think I got my answer, and I'm in support of it, I just wanted to ensure in the next bullet, the person or group requesting a proclamation, sort of, that's two separate, and/or, or the person being recognized, right? So for example, I'm guilty for asking the mayor a proclamation, but for events that are benefiting Gilroy.
I can answer that.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I can, because I knew that's where you're going with this. So, if you notice, it says the person or group requesting the proclamation or recognition is a member, so you are a member of Gilroy, so you can make the request. What's going to be different is when it gets to recognitions being presented at council meetings, then that has to be both, the person requesting and whoever's being recognized has to be a member of the Gilroy community. But if it's not being presented at a council meeting, you can ask for somebody who's coming to town from the Poppy Jasper Film Festival to get a proclamation that is not being presented here at a council meeting.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the request will include a sample proclamation, or information to assist in preparing the proclamation, save some staff time on that. The proclamation recognition will be signed by the mayor or mayor pro tempore in the absence of the mayor. Request shall be submitted to the mayor and city administrator for approval at least ten business days prior to the time of the proclamation is to be available or presented. We do have some differences depending on how the proclamation recognition is going to be presented, so if at a council meeting, the cresting group must have a representative at the meeting to receive it. Requests for a special day, week, month, or year recognized in solidarity to a cause shall not be presented to any particular group or individual, but should be read aloud by the mayor. And again, proclamations will be read by the mayor, mayor pro tempore, and then presentation at a specific council meeting is not guaranteed, we'll do the best we can to meet the request, but we cannot guarantee it. If it's being presented at an event, it'll be presented by the mayor, in the absence of the mayor, it may be presented by a council member or staff member that's attending the event, and the proclamation request may be granted at the mayor's discretion. If it's not at a council meeting or being presented at an event, the proclamation will be mailed to or picked up by the requister, and again, the proclamation request may be granted at the mayor's discretion. So at this point, staff is recommending approval of the proposed policy, and I have to answer any questions.
Okay, any public comment on this?
No public comment, madam mayor.
Okay, no public comment, so it's council.
Move for approval.
All right, move for approval, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Bracco, and how do we have to roll call?
We can do digital roll call, but I'll do a roll call here.
Okay.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blinkley.
Yes, okay, that was unanimous with one absent. Okay, item twelve, city administrators' reports.
Thank you, madam mayor, just a couple of quick updates, I want to thank everybody who attended the, the April 22 cleanup at Lasana's Park, we had about twenty people there, got about fifteen bags of garbage, some really interesting stuff we found, but come see for yourself when we do Uvis Creek on May 20th, that'll be our next cleanup event, but it really is a good event, and we're out there about an hour, hour and a half, so I do appreciate everyone who attended. The next thing is, I wanted to give a shout out to the Recreation Department, who put on a really, really great program called the AARP Tax Aid Program, and this is a program put on to enable seniors who hate during their taxes, like the rest of us, no offense, mayor, but really struggle and don't understand the tax rules, the AARP sponsors it, and our Recreation Department puts it on for them, and we were able to help one hundred and twenty-nine seniors get their taxes done, so really proud of our Recreation Team for jumping in there and helping the senior center with that. And then last, I want to give a recognition, recognition to the city of Gilroy and the Gilroy Unified School District, who were selected by the California Association of Public Information Officials for an award for their 2022 fentanyl campaign in Ritual Town Hall. This was a very large campaign led by Rochelle Fadel and her school district counterparts, received a lot of good accolades for our Narcan training, the awareness campaign in our Ritual Town Hall that included youth, and so it was nice to be recognized by the state for our efforts, and that will be awarded tomorrow at the annual conference, so thank you to everybody who participated, but especially thank you to our partners at the school district who helped us with the successful campaign. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, all right, city attorneys' reports.
I have a very short report, I want to just acquaint you with an instructive case about the merits of settling construction disputes. Now, we sued, the city of Gilroy sued the architect of the police building some years ago, as those of you may recall, they originally were going to build a bigger building, when they shortened it, they got the design all wrong. We were claiming about three million dollars, and we settled before trial for two million. We got the money, and everybody was happy with the settlement. So a case was just reported out of LA for the LA Unified School District, which hired a contractor to build a thirty-nine million dollar elementary school. And there was, the concrete cracked in the foundations, it was really messy, nobody could figure out what was wrong with the concrete, whether it was a design flaw by the architects, or the contractor had poured it wrong, or mixed it wrong, or something. So there was litigation, and there was a thirty-five days of jury trial, and you can imagine what that cost, with many parties involved, many lawyers, a lot of testimony. At the conclusion of that, there was about three million dollars of damages, roughly the same amount in our case. So that case was appealed by several parties, and when it went up to appellate court, they reversed the verdict, which came after thirty-five days of jury trial, because the jury instructions contained one sentence that was incorrect, literally one sentence, about thirty words, that incorrectly specified a sort of burden of proof issue, and the appellate court decided that this mistake was so important that the entire thirty-five days of trial was thrown out, plus all the money that it took to get to the appellate court. So the bottom line is that the parties have spent millions of dollars, far more than the actual damages in the case, because they couldn't sensibly resolve a dispute that they should have done. So, it's just a lesson for us all, you read a case like that, and you think, there but for the grace of God, go we, and we don't litigate like that, fortunately, typically. So anyway, that's the end of my report.
Oh, nothing on the training memo?
Nope.
Okay, okay then, we are adjourned at nine thirty-three. Wow, those who hung in there must not have a life either.